Okay, so it's 6:30 and I'd like to call this October 3, 2022, meeting of the Concord Select Board Order. And so we'll start as usual with the consent agenda. Oh, actually, before that, we need to-
I move that we assign, elect Henry Dane, Clerk-
Yeah, I think it's the word.
What?
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I vote for myself?
Yes, absolutely, I hope you do. All right, now that we have a clerk, because Terry Ackerman is absent this week.
Okay, I'm gonna have to call after-
Please, okay, thank you. We can call the consent agenda, please.
Approve the minutes of July 25th and August 15th to approve the town accountant warrant and to approve one-day special liquor license applications to the Umbrella Arts Center, wine and malt beverages only for events on the following dates: September 30th, October 1st, 2nd, 6th, 7th, 8th.
I think we're looking at the wrong, the wrong agenda.
Oh, it is, this is right. Oh, I brought the materials for the wrong meeting.
I was thinking, yes.
As well as, so does somebody have the materials for this meeting?
All you have to do, Henry, is say that you've moved to approve-
Yes. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and I just wanted to note that there's sort of an unusual item on the consent agenda, which is these executive session minutes for the Concord Town Manager Search Committee. This is a committee that met, of course, a couple of years ago and was subsequently disbanded, and there is public interest in their executive session minutes, and now that that matter has been closed, it's time to share those with the public, and so we are doing so as the board that created that search committee. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town managers' report.
Thank you and good evening. First, I would like to introduce Shannon McAndrew, who is sitting here at the table with us. Shannon just started today. She is the Senior Administrative Assistant and primary staff support to the Select Board. We're very happy to have Shannon with us here.
I would second that. All in favor?
Referring to the report that was in your packet, we had our employee appreciation picnic last Thursday. We had beautiful weather and a great turnout. About 180 employees attended the luncheon that we had in honor of employees. You probably have heard by now, our police chief, Joe O'Connor, has announced his retirement. That is for December 22, 2022. I'd like to thank Chief O'Connor for his leadership and commitment to move the department forward during these challenging times. He has overseen the process of accreditation for the department, which was a significant undertaking, and he leaves a strong foundation for the future, and we wish him well. Also in the Police Department, one of our sergeants, Michael Burgess, began his training at the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Program. He started that last week. It is put forth by the Municipal Police Training Committee, and this is an innovative program that's designed for law enforcement leaders and focuses on emerging challenges facing the police profession. There's some information in the report about the level of activity for both the Police and Fire Department. We also had Captain Curran, who is a member of the State Hazardous Materials Team, respond to an incident in the city of Marlborough. We have two of our fire personnel, Walter, the Assistant Chief Walter Latta, and one of the firefighters, Todd Neme, who were deployed over the weekend to help with the rescue efforts in Florida. They are both part of the Mima Northeast Response Team. We have a third staff member, Erin McClosco, who is our Highway Superintendent, who is also on that team and was not deployed, and he's very disappointed that he was not deployed. This would have been his first opportunity, but I'm sure he'll be called for service at some point, probably sooner than we would like. I believe I mentioned last week, we had 11 applications for CPA funding. This is the first time in recent history, maybe ever, that the total of the applications is less than the anticipated revenue available. We did receive the notice to proceed on the Shared Streets and Spaces grant for the intersection of Main and Walden. This is to make pedestrian improvements in that area, and so we're looking forward to that project. Before we started the meeting, there was mention about the Assabett River Bridge project. That has been granted approval to enter the Transportation Improvement Plan, Program Plan, that is federal funding that comes through the state. This project is anticipated to cost about $8 million. It has been given the green light to move to final design. That is expected to take about two years. We are funding the design locally, but we do expect the majority of the construction to be funded through the tip. There's information about the September 27 Planning Board meeting, an update on the Housing Production Plan, a note that visitation tourism to Concord is extremely high and reported higher than pre-pandemic levels. There are a lot of interesting programs that are being sponsored by the Visitor Center. We have a note about the COVID, the COVID status or the community level in Middlesex County is reported as medium. We are hearing that the number of COVID cases is increasing, and our Board of Health Staff is recommending that people get their vaccine, their booster if they are eligible to do so, because we do expect to see an uptick in that. The Concord Festival of Authors celebrates its 30th anniversary. It begins on October 13, and there is information about all of the different activities posted on the library's website, and I will leave it at that and stop for questions.
Okay, are there any questions for the town manager? Yes, Linda.
Terrific news on the Assabett River Bridge getting on the tip. That's wonderful. I do have a question about the deployment of, you know, our lieutenant for the Mima. Do we know ahead of time how long they're deployed for?
So we're anticipating that they will be deployed for two weeks?
Okay.
And their salary is reimbursed through FEMA at 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So Carrie, I noticed that the planning board voted to have a meeting between the chairs of the Select Board, the FinCom, and the town manager relative to the MBTA communities, the new law. Can you give us a little bit more, whether we're hoping to get out of that meeting, do you know?
So that request came over at the end of last week. I'm not exactly sure. I was intending to talk to the chair tomorrow before we sent that out to the full board, because we'd like to understand what the intent of that is.
Great, thanks.
I would expect that we would end up having a joint meeting at some point.
I have a question, which is also relative to the Assabett River Bridge, which is, you mentioned that the town will be paying for the design. We've already appropriated the funds for that design step, haven't we?
Yes, I believe it's 50/50 between a CPA appropriation and the other portion coming from our own capital plan.
Okay, thanks, that's good to know. All right, if there are no other questions, I'd like to just make my own remark, which is very short this time, which is to add my congratulations to Chief O'Connor on his upcoming retirement and to thank him for his service. There's very, it is very hard for someone in my position to understand the full scope of his contributions, but I can just say that in the interactions that I've had, I've especially been impressed with the chief's communication skills, especially in, you know, delicate situations with the public and very complex and emerging issues in our society. So that's a rare skill, and I really hope we can continue with leadership in that area as we make a leadership transition in the Police Department. Okay, now let's move to the Concord Middle School, our regular item recently on our agenda, and the potential call for a special town meeting. And so I think we'll start with an update from our co-chairs of the Middle School Building Committee, and then we'll proceed with deliberations about the special town meeting prospect here.
Okay, thanks, and introduce yourselves and-
Pat Nelson, co-chair of the Middle School Building Committee, 52 Cottage Lane.
All right.
And Dawn Guarriello, co-chair alongside Pat with the Concord Middle School Building Committee and 57 Bruce Russell Roof.
Okay, so tell us what's new since the last time we met.
I think that fundamentally, we've finished our value engineering process. We've come to a conclusion, and the number, the bottom line number is, and I see that you've got the-
The numbers are still smaller. 1.879261, I think Chris said you could share this?
Inclusive of the bidding contingency?
I'm sorry, that's the amount accepted. I'm not sure.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's the amount of value engineering that has been taken out of the scope of the project since August?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So where does that put us? We got these right before the meeting.
Yeah, it was just this afternoon, I saw a message come across.
Excuse me, it's a bit hard to hear the speaker. Thank you.
Oh, is your mic on?
Yes, he just asked me to move it closer.
Okay.
So are you looking for the-
There we go, we're seeing this.
There you go, thank you.
If there's any way to expand it, Chris, that'd be great, thank you.
I was just zooming in, Chris. Down on the lower right, there's a highlighted box that says 106,441,949. It's right there, yep. So that would be where we are at the end of value engineering, including the bid contingency, which is the number right above it. Matt, to answer your question?
Okay.
The 104,422638 is without it, two boxes above it.
So where we've ended up then is about 3.6 million above the schematic design estimate that town meeting voted on. But of course, that's based upon our design development estimate.
That's correct.
So we still have two rounds of estimates coming-
Yes.
-before we go out to bid.
That's right, next month and around the first of the year. That's 60% construction documents, which those drawings went to the estimators last week, I believe, Friday. They'll get them back, they'll reconcile all within a few weeks, and we'll see them, I think, the third week in October, the 20-something.
20th, isn't it?
Our next meeting.
Yeah.
So a few weeks from now, we'll have those 60% numbers.
Okay.
And then the 90% around the first of the year, give or take. I think it's actually the 11th or something of January.
I think the 13th is-
13th, sorry. The number's moved a little bit. Yeah, I did have a special town meeting potential impact on the schedule.
So could you just give a couple of examples of the kinds of things that have been affected through the value engineering process?
Oh my goodness, there's, I wish I had the number off the top of my head, and the number of items that were actually value engineered out or reduced, but in this latest round, we were getting down to very smallish sorts of things, like bollards, the number of bollards in front of the building. I'm gonna have to turn to you, you've got the list in front of you.
Yeah, I'm just looking at what has been accepted. There's a reduction in insulation, underslab insulation, reduction in exterior mineral wool insulation from eight to six inches, and we're talking fairly detailed information here. Reduction in the polyiso, which is insulation in the roof. There are combined air handling units for the gymnasium and auditorium. Instead of having two units, there's a shared unit, a little bit bigger, but it's cost effective to combine and share because they're not far from each other. There's no additional, you know, not major ductwork changes with that. There's some exposed corridor ceilings that change, some material changes, and that includes changing the quarry tile to epoxy in the kitchen. Sometimes that's done anyway. There were some ceramic tile changes in the bathroom, as far as how much was on the wall there, and I'm just going down the line here.
Or like reducing the height of the gym, that was another one.
Yep, yep, so reduction in the height of the gym. I forget how many feet that was, three or five?
Five, probably.
I can probably find it, five. There's, yeah, I mean, if you're remembering better than I am, Matt.
Well, I'm just peeking at the list.
There's a reduction in the AV systems by 15% in the auditorium. There's eliminating some shelving, some built-in shelving in the media center and using it, buying it out of the, like, out of a catalog, like casework, which the rest of the shelving is. So instead of having someone build it in, like you would see on this wall here, it's actually like furniture pieces. So there's a change in the master clock system, there's elimination of a green screen and cable trellis at the front. If I'm not mistaken, I think we changed a little bit of the canopy entry and the bollards at the front, so still trying to preserve some of the ability to find the front entrance of the building, but reduce the amount being spent there, but still provide weather coverage. There were some bevels in the CMU that we eliminated. So those, I just scrolled down the line.
Yeah, okay, I think that gives a sense.
There's certainly a few more, but that's to give you the breadth of the type of things, and there are, on this list alone, 82 items that we talked about, every single one in detail.
Yeah, and took several. So are there questions from the board about kind of where we've arrived at this stage of the process with the middle school budget and scope, project scope? Mary?
Yeah, I have a question. Actually, I have two questions. My first is, were you able to find savings to offset any design changes that were made to the schematic design that supported the number brought to the special town meeting?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, my understanding is that there were design changes made after the schematic design, which supported the 102.8 million that we approved at town meeting, and I'm wondering, the cost of those design changes, were you able to find money in other places in the budget to offset that?
Are you asking about what we paid the professionals to do the changes, or are you asking about the actual, like, development of the design?
The actual design of the building.
The design of the building.
Right.
So schematic design is typically laid out like a budget, right? So you're saying, you go to the town with a budget. From schematic design into design development, you further refine those elements, and that could include everything from material selection to what's out in the landscape. So with that, there were, you know, further development, we put the design development drawings out and got the numbers back. I think we said in the first meeting that we came to you, that the design, for all intents and purposes, hadn't changed substantially. It was the supply chain and the materials cost and what that drove the number up, so-
I thought there were some design changes, though.
There's refinements, so like you might say, oh, we're gonna do some landscape work, and you hold a budget number, and then you actually draw, in design development, you figure that out and start detailing it and defining what that actually is.
So Mary, I think, you know, what I, they've got a plan, and then they start to lay it out, but then, you know, in the process of laying that, well, you need to put a line here or a line there to make that design work. So it's further execution of the original design. It wasn't big design changes as much as it was further refinements, and the way I think of it is, you're just drawing more specifics.
Well, I'll be specific. What I've heard is that there was a change to, there was a ramp or some kind of an exit coming out of the cafeteria that added something like $400,000 to the cost of the project that was not part of the schematic design, and my question was, did we find offsets somewhere else to cover that so we stay within the budget?
I guess you could-
How does this process work?
I guess you could say that any reductions that we found, you could apply that to any costs in the project. So I don't think that we looked at that and said, okay, now we need to find $400,000 for that specific element of the building.
And that ramp is to provide accessibility from one side of the back campus to the other side, so one that needs, so that's a code requirement in some ways. If you want, if you need those spaces to connect, you have to provide access, and you can do it with an elevator, you can do it with a lift, you could do it with a ramp. And outside, obviously, a ramp is the best solution, or a walkway, an accessible walkway. So that was what that specific issue was about, so as they started-
It wasn't in the schematic, it was added later.
Well, there was a landscape budget, and that fell within that budget, but then when, you know, VE came and they started looking at what some of the big cost items within that budget were, that was one of them.
Okay.
So it was within the budget at SD. They knew they had a certain amount of landscape money to spend, and that was in it.
Okay, okay. My second question is, do you have to go to the ZBA for any kind of relief from zoning requirements for the town?
I don't know the answer to that, because I'm not a professional.
Actually, I believe the project was before the ZBA-
I think it already went through, actually.
On Thursday, around height and around the pervious or impervious surface coverage, and I believe there's one other criterion. So I don't know if anyone's aware of where that stands now in terms of the ZBA's approvals. I didn't attend the meeting, I don't know.
Yeah, and I don't know, since it's not my professional project.
The reason I ask the question is because way back when, when we were, you know, doing the schematic design and we were getting ready for the first special town meeting, and I was the chair of the FinCom, and I remember being at every one of those meetings, and I remember when the topic first came up about increasing the size of the gym, remember the original plan had a regular-sized gym, it didn't have a larger gym, and when that idea first came up, a question came up, would that increase the impervious area? Remember that?
Yeah.
And so the architect said, wait, we have to wait and see, and they went back, and then they came back and they said, no, no problem, right? And now I find out that there is a problem with, we do need relief from some kind of an impervious requirement. Am I, what am I missing here?
I don't know. I would have to ask the professional. That's not something I know anything about right now. As far as I knew, they were tracking it closely, and if they are having to ask for relief on it, then I'm just not in the line.
Yeah, I guess what I'm wondering is if the momentum for the larger gym was based on premature information, because I remember specifically, that was a, that was a point that we needed to understand before we even explored whether we could have a larger gym, and the answer came back that we were, that we were fine, and now we're, I guess we're not, so I'm wondering how-
Where did you hear we weren't?
Well, just because on the agenda, I guess, for the ZBA, seeking that relief, you wouldn't seek it if you didn't need it.
We'll have to get back to you.
Great, great, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't have an answer, so we'll have to get back to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
But I assume the point there is compliance with whatever the zoning board needs may require changes in the design.
Perhaps, though, the ZBA may have granted relief, so, or may grant relief. I mean, they can, you appeal, that's the Zoning Board of Appeals, you appeal to get relief.
So they can, they can grant relief.
Certainly.
But it's-
Well, I usually, with the impervious surface, they ask for, you know, compensatory measures to compensate.
We'll find out. You're gonna get back to us, right?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so I guess now, if there aren't further questions-
Well, if you're getting to the point of no further questions, I do have some further questions. Is the 106,441,949 the number that you want to have in the town meeting warrant for the bond authorization?
The committee has recommended that we choose a number that is up to, and that is a greater number, so that we avoid having to come back if there's any, if we do have to go above that number, but that's really, I think, up to you guys to choose, I mean, we've made a recommendation, we're feeling pretty solid about the 106. It's been suggested that having a cushion above that would be a good idea, but I believe that's your purview.
We're not gonna pick that number, are we?
Well, last time, the recommendation was made to us, and then we set the number for the warrant, and I should mention, too, that I believe that the warrant article would be for an additional amount of funding, so, you know, we currently have the authorization of the 102.8 and change, and now we would then be asking for some additional authorization to be excluded from Prop 2.5 in order to cover the full program cost. So I think that the risk of setting the warrant to be this new budget number is that if there's any increase in either the 60% or 90% estimates, I don't anticipate at this point there would be any scope increases in the building. I mean, in fact, it's, if you will, the cement is starting to dry on the design, if you will. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of opportunity for changes at that level, that, you know, there will be, continue to be ever finer levels of detail in which maybe even further value engineering can take place, but the elements of the design are set. So it's really a contingency, and there's always the opportunity to set the warrant article at one number and make the motion at town, special town meeting, at some number less than that, to reflect what the actual estimates come back.
Well, I think we need to know what the number is that we're gonna ask the town meeting to approve before we call the special town meeting, and I think we also need to know that this is, this is the number, and that the committee will not be coming back to us for additional funding, regardless of what the increasing costs are, because there has to be a cap on what is, what is to be spent. And so my feeling is that we, and I don't think it's our place to pick that number. I think they have to pick the number, and they have to be willing to stand by it, and if it's high, if it's a high number, because they think that the cost may go up, I think that's something we need to know now, and it's something that needs to be reflected in the warrant article when we decide to call the special town meeting. This, I think, is the largest expenditure in the history of the town, if I'm not wrong. Other towns have spent more on schools, but they're towns with higher or larger tax bases with more commercial taxable property. The revenues available to the town to fund the school do not increase- taxable property. The revenues available to the town to fund the school do not increase with interest rates. In fact, they decrease with rising interest rates and the, nor with increasing construction costs. I wouldn't say that our revenues are fixed, but they certainly, since our tax revenue is, is relies on the valuation of our property and the town budget, everything goes up for the town. And so we actually, with rising costs and higher interest rates, the town has less money to spend on any particular thing, including the school. And the town does not have unlimited resources. This project, as it stands now at the hundred and two million dollar figure, is estimated to add over a thousand dollars to the tax bill of the median price or median valued home. And what I hear, hear today is not so much the concerns or do not address the concerns that I think I and many others have about this, but just about the attempts to reduce the costs. And although I applaud the efforts to shave off whatever you can, if you're talking about 102, 103, 105, 106 million dollars, cutting off a million dollars or two in savings really does not have any significant impact on the cost, the tax cost on the median valued home. So that if we go to, say, 108 million, that it's going to be over 1,100 on the median home for an, on their addition to the annual tax bill. And there seems to be no concern, I mean, there seems to be no concern here about the impact that has on other capital needs of the town. Because with the tax average, the median tax bill going up by a thousand dollars, there are a lot of people in this town, we can't ask to pay even higher taxes to pay for things, for things that have been long deferred and are badly needed that we discussed at the capital planning meeting with the school committee last week. We have a public works facility where millions of dollars of worth of equipment is stored outdoors because we don't have any place to put it in. We have police, police officers working out of closets with wiring and ventilating equipment hanging over them. We have firehouses that fire engines cannot fit into and are not appropriate for modern, for modern technology. And these, these are, these are things, these, the, these are things that have been long deferred. And if we actually spend over a hundred million dollars on the middle school, these projects will need, need to be deferred well into the future because this impact is going to last for, you know, 20 years or so. And so I think that in deciding where we're going to go with this, we have to take into account the impact that this has on other town capital needs. It also needs to take into account the impact that it has on the, the taxpayers and all the taxpayers in this town, contrary to what many people think are not wealthy people. And paying another thousand dollars a year or 1,200 a year is actually a hardship for many people who live in this town. It's not just, oh, it's just another bill to pay. We have elderly, we have veterans, we have people disabled and we're living on pensions, retired people, people on fixed income, divorced and single parents, those who have scraped every penny they had together to buy a home or live in this town so that their children could take advantage of the wonderful education that we provide to them. So then we have the people whose families have lived here for generation who are being pushed out the door by the increasing tax burdens, which they are not compensated for by the increasing value of their property. Because the only way that they realize the benefit that comes from the increased value is by selling it and moving out.
Mr. Dane, could you wrap up your comments?
Yeah, this is, this is, as I said, this is the largest expense that this town has incurred.
Yeah.
At least as long as I've lived here, it's worth covering the material, at least give you the chance to, to deal with this. I don't see what the rush is. The, the, so that the rising taxes lead to an exodus of residents and those modest homes that they live in now are sold and become the, what we call the mega mansions. And that we, which we seem not to, not to favor, but we do not in any way prevent. And so this is in conflict with our goals of having affordable housing, making housing available to people of modest means and retaining the residency of people in this town who are of great value and are part of our living heritage. So those things I don't think have been adequately considered. And we have not had any discussion, at least no, no discussion has come forth today about even some of the measures that are perfectly obvious about the commitments that the building committee could make in order to reduce the cost, such as agreeing that the 548,000 a year that was promised as the operating cost savings and the school budget by operating one instead of two schools be paid out of the school budget after the new schools are in operation to help pay for the debt service for the schools. There is no mention of the five million dollars that was talked about that would be saved if we built this school and increased maintenance costs for the obsolete buildings. There's no talk about making a real concrete commitment to use the revenues that could be generated from the Peabody School site in order to help to pay the debt service on the school. These are all things I think are essential to the whole project and it's nearsighted to just look at the cost without looking at not only the savings, but also on the sources of revenue and the way that the impact, the tax impact on the less fortunate of us in this town can get some relief. The, there has been some, there's been some correspondence that we have received indicating two things. One is that questioning the respect that we have for the building committee. I assure you, there was no disrespect. And I think it's, it's not, it's not appropriate to say that when somebody has a different opinion on a matter, that that shows disrespect. They've done a wonderful job of what they, what they're supposed to do. But I think it's our responsibility as a select board representing the whole town to represent the whole town in terms of showing greater concern for the financial impact of this.
Thank you. I, you know, I really appreciate, let me just, I just appreciate what you just said, that, that you appreciate the work that we've done to do what we're supposed to do. And one other thing, I'm just sort of speaking as a citizen now. One of the things I've always thought was really important in Concord or in any municipality is that we've got a finance committee and a select board. The, the school building committee was created to build the best school that we could possibly build for the middle schoolers. And so I think that all of us together, and I, and I, it, I don't think you're just addressing the school building committee. I think you're probably addressing your, your fellow select board members and the other committees in town wanting to take this broader view of the needs of the town.
Yes. I, yes. I mean, I, I think that I need to persuade this board as well, at least some of the members of this board, that we need to like, I think we need to step back and look at this. And the way I have perhaps, I think there's an inversion here. The, the concern that many people often have about democracy is that those less fortunate abuse their power as a majority to, to tax the wealthy. But actually, in this town, we have a situation where the fortunate, the, the more fortunate of us are actually in a position of imposing what amounts to a tax on the less fortunate. Because if we vote to have the less fortunate majority still shoulder the burden of this tax that will arise from building this school, that is, that is what has happened. And the way I kind of describe it in kind of a, perhaps not entirely concise way, or maybe in a concise way, and that is, we are, we are building schools to educate children whose parents cannot afford to live in Concord. And maybe I will leave it at that, except to say that I believe that if, if, at least as far as I'm concerned, if we are going to vote to call for a special town meeting, about which I have a great many reservations because the town meeting that voted for the 102 million dollars was attended by 515 people in the middle of January and two thirds of them voted, but it was a, what I would call a well curated constituency in a town with 14,000 registered voters. And it seems to me that it is not letting the voters decide if three or 400 people make this, this incredibly important decision about spending a great deal of money. So I think there are some issues that I think need to be resolved before I will vote to call a special town meeting. And I'm not prepared to just throw it up in the air and see what happens.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dane. Any other comments from select board members?
Well, you know, I think it's appropriate for us all to hear the voice of people who aren't always represented at this table in terms of the impact and that this will have on them. But I do want to say that when we look at the values of the town and what we have agreed to up to this point in terms of pursuing the middle school project, a great deal of conversation has ensued around all of that. And I do think the value of education for our students is, is one that the town by and large has always supported, even when it is meant sacrifices on the part of the citizens. That's not to say that the, the work that the committee, the building committee has done in terms of looking at value engineering has been critical. All of us wish they would have been able to come back with even deeper cuts on the value engineering, but there is some reality to the costs that are before them and also the educational design that they're, they're working with. What I, I do think it is important for the voters to have an opportunity to weigh in on this and they will have an opportunity to go to the polls after the special town meeting, assuming that it passes there, some additional amount is awarded. And the voters will have an opportunity. So I think I'll leave my comments there.
Okay. Mary, do you have any further comments?
I, I agree with a lot of what Linda said. I do think we need a special town meeting. And I think we need to hear from citizens in Concord what they think, not from the middle school. I, I want to make sure that when, what I'm hoping is that when we go to town meeting, oh, sorry. I'll start again. I think we need a special town meeting. And what I'm hoping is that when we go to the, to the town at special town meeting, we have done all we can to get this cost down as low as we possibly can. Because what I'm worried about is that if we don't do that important work and continue that work, that this might not be approved by the voters in Concord. And then where are we? I think we all agree, we need a middle school. And if that happens, we'll, we'll get less of a school for more money down the road. So, you know, I think the work that you do on a value management is just so critical and I would urge you to continue that. We'll, we'll, we'll find out more, if we have more work to do and we get the 60%, right? So, you know, I applaud the work you've done, but I, I really hope that we bring it in as low as we possibly can because I, I would like it to pass and not cost us more down the road.
And then I would just like to say that I, I don't know if any of you have ever witnessed any of these meetings that go on hours, and there are many of them, that I've been about as assertive as any of the members seeking value engineering opportunities. I've been very disappointed at different times of not to have achieved more. But at this stage, I think that, you know, I don't want to make perfect be the enemy of the good, that, you know, there, there have been some decreases in scope and we are now at a place where, as Mary said, if we chose to pause or to redesign, there would be incremental costs that I think would give us less for more in the end. And so at this point, I'm really ready to go ahead and have the town go through the process to see whether our voters are prepared to increase the budget for this project.
But are you willing to at least ask in connection with that, that we get some fairly strong representations from the school committee about some of these things that they can do that will decrease the tax burden, such as taking the, the savings in their operating budget and using those to go toward debt service?
We have seen the school committee budgets that have been, you know, defined for the, the long-term plan and recent school committee meetings. And they do show not so much directly a contribution to debt service, but rather a reduced growth rate in the school budget, right? It's really one pocket versus another, if you will. So they are accounting for those reductions in costs and projecting a lower growth rate in, in the school budget as a consequence.
But to make it, I think you have to really specifically identify it and characterize it. Because if all you're doing is slowing down, it, it just becomes very foggy as to what is increases in cost and what is, what is dedicated to what was represented as being the cost savings that would be realized. There's no reason that it should not be formalized and identified as a contribution toward the debt service, the amount of money that was represented that would be saved in operating costs. And it should not be able to be buried among many other factors, such as labor union negotiations and energy costs and whatever, so that we really do get a contribution toward the cost coming from the savings that are realized. I think it's
It is, it is explicit in their strategic plan. So
Well, but that's not the same as a really, an explicit understanding that that is what's going to happen as a part of the process in which we agree to call a special town meeting. meeting. And I think there are other concessions that could be made, that could be memorialized, maybe not be enforceable as contracts, but be in the form of a memorandum of understanding or at least, at least a written statement of intent, so that this is all clear and doesn't get lost in the dust of history.
Okay, thank you. So I think that, again, my sense is that we have the, this proposition in front of us of calling a special town meeting. One key piece of information we need, though, is the date, if we are to have a motion on this issue. So my, the, the most recent schedule that I can see here has, and we've expressed at the last meeting that our objective would be to have a 90% estimate, 90% construction documents estimate in hand before the special town meeting. I see here now there's a revised date of January 13th for that reconciled estimate to be delivered to the middle school building committee. And what I've heard from both select board members and finance committee members is that they would like some time to review that, those estimates before a special town meeting took place. I mean, my sense is a week is kind of a minimum number. So I was looking at the, the most aggressive date possible would be January 19th for, for that special town meeting. So my question now moves to the town moderator. Is that a feasible date? Can a schedule be constructed that would get us to that date, even if we don't have that schedule in hand tonight? And-
Good evening, Carmen Reestown, moderator. Thank you for asking my thoughts on this. You know, we can probably make work that date. What I do, and if you're talking about the 19th of January-
Yes.
It bears a little bit more studying, just, it's a very complicated time of year because of all the holidays-
Yes.
And including Martin Luther King Day and so on, it, just to look at whether we've got the adequate number of days to, for example, allow the finance committee to have some time with that 90% estimate before they have to issue their finance committee report and it needs to go to the printer.
Well, no, the report, the finance committee report would go to the printer long before the 90% estimate comes in.
Okay.
Because, yeah, that will go out-
They may have to revise it.
After the public hearing. And mainly, the, the reason for having the 90% estimate is as a kind of checkpoint as to, okay, are we still on track? Or is there something, some substantive change that's occurred since the 60% estimates, which are the basis that will be used for the public hearings?
Okay. I'm sorry.
I have a question about the, if, the, the timing of the FinCon report. If we have the special town meeting on January 19th, this schedule shows the finance committee report being published on December 22nd. Is that the number of dates it has to back up?
So December 22nd was the date that we set when we were considering a special town meeting for January 12th. So, so that, that date could slide a little bit, but again, you know, we've got, we've got some holidays in there. So it may not be able, I'm not sure exactly where that date ends up.
Okay. It's just getting a FinCon report on December 22nd. Not a lot of people are going to read it.
Holiday gifts.
Well, you know, the other question is, is it even worse to have to have it on December 28th, you know? So I just-
Yeah, okay.
But the other thing that I just want to remind you of, and I, I know you all know this, but we're going to be operating on two parallel tracks here, because we're going to have the annual town meeting well underway-
That's right.
-in the same period of time. So I just want to remind you all that the warrant closes on January 4th. The select board on January 9th will be voting the order of the warrant articles. We'll be reviewing the warrant with town council on the 12th, and the deadline for the warrant for annual town meeting to go to the printers is January 25th. So that's an extraordinary burden on staff in that period of time to ask them to be handling both tracks. And it, it may be fairly bearable if indeed the special town meeting warrant has a single article on it, but we, of course, do not have complete control over that.
It's not something we can control. I, I guess the other concern is whether there is a facility to hold the special town meeting on January 19th. I see a nod from Dr. Hunter.
We're doing the high school.
Okay, so I think then, given that the other guardrail around this schedule, which is the need to go to bid by the end of February, and the need to then have three weeks after special town meeting to get a pro and con statements out to, for the vote, I think that the 19th is probably the best we've got as far as the date. So I guess what I'd ask is if there is a motion for calling a special, a special town meeting on a particular date.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I might suggest, if you call simply the date for the special town meeting-
Right.
-and allow us to spend a little time-
Come up with a schedule later.
-working with the calendar. Okay, thank you.
Because I believe that the draft calendar shows that we'll have another meeting before the warrant would open. So we, we have time to refine the calendar, but I, I do think for the clarity of planning, it would be good to have a firm date so that, you know, things don't keep moving around.
You know, and then we may also need a snow date, just given the time of year and-
That's right. We want to be able to accommodate that if need be. Yeah. Okay.
The 19th is a-
Thursday.
Thursday.
So we can make the snow date the 20th. No one wants a town meeting on a Friday, but if it snows, we'll do it.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve a special town meeting on January 19th, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Concord Carlisle Regional High School, and to adopt a special town meeting cal-, I don't know.
No, we won't, well, calendar to be adopted later. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, well, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We have three, and all opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. So we have three in favor, one opposed, the motion carries, and so we have a date. And we will proceed with refining the calendar and preparing a warrant article. I believe as it stands now, to answer the question that you asked at one point, Henry, I believe that it's, if we adopted the recommendation of the building committee, it would be for an incremental $12.2 million worth of funding. Now, I sincerely hope that the motion is well below that, but that is what has been proposed to us. Now, again, I don't know about the wisdom of, of even printing that in the warrant, and that, that's one of the things that I think we need to address when the time comes.
Well, I think that if we're going to ask people to vote on it, we should present them with the worst case.
Well, I think that the intent was that that would be the worst case, that if the number was above that, people would turn back and say, you know, this, we got to do something different. So, I mean, and, and even 115, I think is already pretty, very painful. I mean, 1028 frankly is very painful.
Yes, it's just a matter of degree of pain, you know?
Yes.
May I get back to Mary briefly on the ZBA?
Yeah.
I texted the architect while we were talking. They are in front of the ZBA. It's on the 13th. They're less than 1% over the impervious amount. So if you want more details or want us to follow up further, that was the quick exchange I had with her. So, and it includes building footprint, sidewalks, parking, and, you know, any hardscape on the overall site. So less than 1% over.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. And so now we'll move, oh, yes, Linda, you have one more?
I'll be it, I know there's a lot of work to do and to coordinate the special town meeting with the actual town meeting and all the overlap of work, but do we have some idea of when that proposed calendar might be available?
We'll ask the moderator. Better moderator.
I'll, I'll need to get the attention of town staff. I don't think that that'll be a problem for us to do that this week.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Even though we don't have a meeting for two weeks, it would be nice to-
Yeah, no problem. I think we can get that to you before the end of the week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now I think we'll move to our next agenda item. Thanks, those of you who came out for this one. And the next item is the Personnel Study Task Force report. So members of the Personnel Study Task Force, if you, and then, I don't know, did you call a meeting for tonight? Are you?
Yes.
Yes, so I don't know if you want to call your task force to order.
We did.
Okay. Oh, you already did? Okay, great.
And we've already closed that meeting.
Oh, so then, okay, so there will be no deliberations at this point?
No, you wouldn't know about our minutes anyway.
Okay.
Paul, are you going to do the honors? We put in your packet, oh.
Three yourself?
22.
So if you could introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Anne Rerick, the co-chair of the Personnel Study Task Force, along with Ruth Bauer. And Paul McCone and Bruce Dutton are all members of the committee.
Okay, thanks very much.
And Paul's going to hand out our report to you tonight. This is what we spent the last- What? Okay, thank you.
Trees gave their lives for this.
Thank you. So I want to thank you for allowing the issue to be our sole consideration for the last 11 months. And so we sent you out in the packet just a summary of what is in this big bound blue book, but there's a lot more detail.
Certainly is.
And it's also, also on the website. And as you know, we had a forum a week and a half ago, and over 100 people showed up, either in person or on Zoom. And from that, there were some comments that were sent in. We gave them a week to give us comments, and those were added as an appendix this past week. So that's also going to be in your packet, your, your booklet. So we've only thinking about what are the next steps at this point for us. And for us, it's handing it back to you, but it's also saying, I, we see three things that are most urgent that have come out of this, and I want to leave time for you to ask questions to. One is, as, as the executive summary points out, we believe that there is still a room for the personnel board to exist, and in fact, would like to see it at its full strength. So one of the things we would like to see is some effort put into getting the other board seats filled. And then the other two things that were in your packet were a sample, a description or a reiteration or edit of the charge for the personnel board, just some suggestions as a way of getting started on rewriting the charge for the personnel board, and then finally changing some of the bylaws. And that is also one of the appendix that was sent out to you, so you could see bylaw by bylaw which ones we thought were the most in need of some attention. So our original plan was to make the report earlier, but the forum was quite rich, and we really enjoyed getting to speak to some of the employees we had not had a chance to speak to before. So from here on, we are hoping to be supportive, but at the same time also be relieved of our task.
As all task forces.
And hand it back over to the folks that are in charge.
Okay. All right. First of all, I'd like to thank the task force for a tremendous amount of work. It's really evident, I mean, not just simply by the thickness of the report, but just having read through the, much of the content, not all of the, the policies and procedures, all of that that's in there, but actually looking at through the survey responses, looking at the other towns' board compositions and duties, looking at the recommendations, both for the personnel board itself as well as for the, the bylaw. And then also just the careful study that's just made of our current personnel function within the town. And so, you know, there are apparently, and again, I, I don't have direct information myself, certainly gaps in some fundamental policy, you know, for example, the timeliness and, and currency of policies about the availability of job descriptions, all of these things that are really just basic building blocks of an HR function. So certainly those are a priority if indeed there, there are issues there. The other recommendations are, are kind of best practices and also aligning with the, the values and, and the purpose of our town charter for the, the personnel board. And I, I believe that many of the recommendations to increase the relevance and, and kind of activeness or proactiveness of the personnel board could be very useful, even while acknowledging that, you know, the, the town manager directs, and, and of course, the, the HR department directs the personnel activities that, that are for our town employees. So, you know, thank you very much. That's what I wanted to, to say. Now, I would have, also have to say that for me, the, the recommendations, for example, the edits that are made to the personnel board charts that are proposed, about half of them, I'd say, absolutely, that's perfect. Another half of them, I either say, well, I'm not sure, you know, I, or I'd say, I don't know, I think that's taking us off in the wrong direction. And so those are, you know, certainly-
This is going to be for you to figure out.
Worthy of discussion. A lot of discussion, I think, that we need to have about those. But, you know, I think that what you have done is, you know, fulfilled the charge. I had been concerned at first whether we'd get there, but, you know, now actually, and it is kind of funny to go, oh, okay, appendix Q and R, there's where, there's where it is, you know? I've, I've rarely done that. Usually by the time you get to those upper letters in the alphabet and the appendices-
That's why, that's why you made it a short packet.
Yeah, it's, it's gotten to be kind of academic. So, all right, I've, I've taken too much time for the floor, but anyone else with comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone on the committee, tremendous amount of work. And I think, you know, Matt's recent comments about the charge itself, I, I think there is room for a lot of discussion there that we need to, to take on. But the fact that you have made some suggestions and, you know, helped, I guess, seed our discussions is, is very helpful. I do think, I do want to, I'm sure you've talked about this as a committee, and I do want to note for ourselves and for the public, that this whole exercise came at a very specific time in the, in our history, and also given the sea change that COVID, you know, created. And I think, you know, it, it in no way disputes or undermines any of the data that you've gathered. It's extremely rich and very valuable in terms of all the comments that were gathered in the employee survey. But had this, had your charge as a task force occurred two years before COVID, it may have looked somewhat, somewhat different, maybe not entirely different, but somewhat different from where- it may have looked somewhat different, maybe not entirely different, but somewhat different from where we are. And I'm wondering if you've had a chance to talk about that and what your perspective is on that.
There were things that we talked about that were not within the charge that was given us. For example, now, having all our meetings on Zoom, one of the things that was glaring to us as we went through some of the policies and procedures is there's no policy on working from home. So, you know, if we're another group looking at this and saying, what policy should we come up with? Or what practices do we need to put in place as sort of a standard that would be utilized by everybody across the board? That would be one of them. But that wasn't our charge. What we tried to do is stick to what was our charge. When we heard things as part of the descriptions of what was going well, what wasn't going well, that were kind of outside the scope, that were just so rich, we couldn't ignore them, we had to put them in.
Sure. Yeah, and so I.
But that's, but that's an example. I mean, one of the things I think in the literature researches that we did was talking about how different the workforce in general is from 50 years ago, which is even sooner than when the original charge for the Personnel Board was written and drafted.
Right, well over. Comments from other board members? Yes, Mary?
First of all, I want to echo, thank you for all the work you did. I know you worked really hard, and I really appreciate that. And I think it's important that we're having this conversation. So thank you for that. But I am concerned a little bit about the message that we might be sending to people who could potentially want to come and work for Concord. And specifically, there's a, at the public hearing, I think you mentioned something like a 50% turnover churn.
Fifty percent over five years, yeah.
Right, okay, so what?
That's 10% a year, yeah.
So 10% a year is pretty normal, right?
Depends on, I don't know, is that considered normal?
I think so. I guess, I guess.
That's what that, that's, you know, whatever, whatever you folks want to be normal, that's.
Well, I believe it had been going at 8%, and then during COVID, it was more like 12%.
Right.
And then there's this phenomenon of the great resignation and so forth.
I actually looked it up online today to find out what different attrition rates are by industry. And in government, it's running at about 24%.
Twenty-four?
Yes, but, you know.
Not minuscule, though.
It's just government, you're right. But I guess my, I guess what I'm saying is, what would you say to somebody who's coming to work in Concord if they heard that it was 50%? Because that's the number that's been told.
I don't, I don't, it was 50% over five years.
Right, but I think.
Which is 10%.
Usually, I mean, if you're gonna put out a message, you should probably put it in the format that people measure it, which is annually. So it really is 10%, right? Okay, okay. And then the other thing, is that correct? Or no, is it 10% a year, or I'm here?
Well, it varies, but year to year, but.
Yeah, the numbers are in the report.
You know, between, between eight and 10, I think, yeah.
Did reverse engineering here and asked the Personnel Board, a great thing for them to look at. There's so many variables in looking at that figure. Vacancies, how it's, how many, what year it is, what five years you're looking at?
And also whether it's retirees versus.
Well, that's another great point. It's how much of that attrition is for good reasons? Retirees or people that don't belong in the job anymore?
It's all there in Appendix K.
Is it really?
Appendix K, yes. Shows, it shows the non-retirement death rate percentage of, and then all separations. So you see it was going seven, nine, nine, eight, nine, and then COVID hit, it was 12 and 11. Okay, all separations. And then if you look at those that were non-retirement or death-related, they went up to about 8% from five to six.
Thank you, Matt.
So when there were several questions that were asked about what was going to happen next. And, you know, one of the things that I said at the forum was that I think it's a set time to look at all of the suggestions and sort of prioritize them. And Terry was in agreement with that, having been at that meeting.
Well, and I think that, of course, it's probably too much for us to, just tonight, say, okay, let's adopt Chelmsford's model, and let's have the Personnel Board review all policies and procedures before they become active and so on. Instead, I think we will schedule a future discussion on this topic after time, you know, people have had time to digest. But I think there's also another aspect here, which is from the town staff perspective. I don't know if you want to speak, Carrie, to your response to the report? And kind of if there's any actions on the town's behalf?
Sure. So I've had the benefit of having multiple meetings with the co-chairs and being involved in their process. And as everybody has said, you've done a great amount of work. The employee survey was particularly helpful because there are a lot of themes that emerge. So for me, coming into the position, it's a lot of information, and I know sort of where the low-hanging fruit is. So that was particularly helpful. I do think we have, we have an awful lot of work to do. It is a tough time to recruit people in any sector. And I like to say, on the town side, we operate about a dozen different businesses within the town organization. And I know Anne mentioned the remote work policy, and we don't have a remote work policy, and some of our neighboring communities do. That's a really difficult nut to crack with all of the different businesses that we are involved in. We have some that remote work is just not at all possible. We have others where it is possible, but it's not necessarily practical, practical bull, based on the number of staff that we have in the office and the need to keep buildings open for the public and answer phones. So it's really something that we have struggled with. But we, we did hear loud and clear in the survey what employees are looking for, and that was particularly helpful. I do think it would be helpful to have a joint meeting with the Personnel Board to talk about these recommendations, particularly with, you know, with the changes. And I'll just wrap it up. I did appreciate that the task force did see the benefit in maybe removing some of the specifics out of the bylaw and calling them out so we know that they're there, but refining them in policies because that makes it much easier for us to work with the Personnel Board.
Learning for us was that bylaws have to go to town meeting, whereas a policy can be something that's drafted and be a little more flexible.
Right, and I believe that at this point, it's, it's just the, up to the town staff to promulgate those policies, right?
Right. So we are intending to bring a revised Personnel bylaw. It might not be the full, the full, the full number of revisions based on the time available because town meeting warrant will be opening and closing in a short period of time. But there are other items that have, have come up as well in conversations that I've had with employees, things that are not necessarily noted that are also important. And we hope to bring at least a version of a revised bylaw to town meeting, and we'll keep working at it until we get it completed.
Okay. Other comments from the board? Okay, then I would, since this is a very high interest item, I'd also like to take a moment to ask whether there's any public comment on the task force report at this time. We tend to favor those that are present in the live audience before we move to the Zoom. But if, so if there's anyone here present who would like to come forward, have a seat at the table, state your name, and speak into the microphone with your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Mark Howell, 668 Ners Not Killed Road. And I would also like to add my thanks, first and foremost, to the folks that put in the time to get this done. I've made quite a few comments on this subject over the, over the last couple of years, and always tried to be a little bit out ahead of where we are. So at this point, I do feel that the task force has done a very good job of delineating what the current state is, what the ground truth is. I'd like to just sort of zoom out a little bit and say, the level of employee involvement with things like the survey and the. You do next is extremely important to a very important constituent of this community, which is those employees. And so it's really very critical that you take on a process that leads to a better systematic outcome. And that's where, that's where, what I think is required here. The bylaw and the charge are implementations of a governance system. And so I would suggest that at this stage of the game, the appropriate thing is maybe augment the current charge with some specific tasks. For example, if we want to understand turnover better, ask the Personnel Board to sponsor some work, to come back with some recommendations, and think about the goal-setting process. Think about how we might incorporate personnel practices with some of the emerging elements like DEI, for which there's quite a bit of, of energy right now. Because when we think about what equity really means in that framework, it's not, it's, it's a, it kind of starts with the people that are already here and the employee population that we have today. And we are very values-led as a community. The discussion about the middle school earlier this evening also showed that education is a high priority. It is extremely important that we, as citizens, show that how employees are treated is a high priority for us. And that will help us solve part of the recruitment problems and the turnover problems if those things are, you know, come forward. So my quick suggestions are, spend a little time on the charge right now, ask the Personnel Board to get involved. Maybe don't let these good people from the task force off the hook quite so quickly. I know that they don't love that idea. But I suggest that they have a lot of expertise at the moment that might really go into how to develop a system. We have some, some people on this board that are very good at doing things like writing bylaws and governance. So don't let that expertise out the door quite yet. And maybe with an eye towards not this town meeting, but the next one, or possibly the one after that, actually has a bylaw that begins to instantiate a much better system that reflects some of the goals and values of our community. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Actually, it sounded, for a hearing, right, we may have opportunity to get some progress even in this next town meeting. We'll see.
Yeah, maybe. I wouldn't rush it. I think it's more important that there is an ongoing effort that prioritizes how, what our relationship is between ourselves as an employer and the employees that come to work for this town. If we can find a way to prioritize that, the way we prioritize sustainability, the way we prioritize education, and some of the other things in this community, that will restore our actual practice to something like what I think we, many of us thought it was before. This has been an issue that has been in the making for a very long time. It was, you know, to Linda's point, exacerbated by the pandemic, but it was certainly not created by that.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment in the room? Then I'd like to move to the Zoom meeting. If you are watching on Zoom and you would like to make a public comment, please look under the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and pick the raise hand function so that you can be recognized and make your comment. And I am not seeing anyone on Zoom. Okay, thank you again to the task force. What? You, oh, you really want us to disband you? Well, I, I think we have one more party to hear from, so I don't feel obliged to have a meeting. But we, the Personnel Board, I believe, will be coming before us, sharing their impressions. And I think that. Of course, of course, I understand, okay. But, you know, we'd love, I think I want to leave open the possibility of, of having you all.
Well, could we do, could we?
At some future gathering.
Could you disband us and we'll agree to all be here?
Okay, well, I guess my hesitation really comes because of past task forces. So for example, the NMI Starment Task Force, we disbanded. And then we found that we really needed further consultation. And, I mean, luckily, we've been able to tap into the individuals, but, so, I don't know. What do you all think? Should we disband the task force now or keep it open? You think so? What about you, Linda? And Henry?
We have already told ourselves and agreed.
Okay, so they wish to be disbanded. They're making the request.
We've got, we've got too many, much blood, sweat, and tears already put into this.
Okay. Okay, and we have the paper in front of us.
We know where we live.
Okay, so I guess then what we should do is have a motion. So do I have a motion?
Yes.
And what is that?
The motion is that we disband the Personnel Task Force, Personnel Study Task Force, with our extreme thanks and appreciation.
Okay, do I have a second to that? All right, any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Reluctantly, aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly, aye, for myself then, too. If the task force doesn't want to continue, I find it difficult. Okay, you're disbanded. That's true. That is a silver lining. Okay. Thank you for your time. And now we are moving to our next item.
Matt, there's several people.
In the hall, so we'll give them a minute to join. A spare copy? For Terry, okay, all right.
Matt, that wasn't the answer to my question.
You mean about the turnover rate?
Yeah.
We have a lot of turnover this evening of a different sort. These topics are all very independent of one another in a way. Okay. Well, we're still about 15 minutes late. Okay. So here, we're now going to discuss the short-term solution for Junction Park in West Concord. And I believe there, some time ago, we asked our Director of Planning and Land Management, Marcia Rasmussen, to take a look at the recommendations, of course, of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee, as well as the comments that we had received, and to come up with a plan for how to move forward. So let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marcia Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management. And you have a presentation that I put together that is also available online through your, through your meeting documents. But I've, to go back, after getting direction to develop an implementation plan, I did meet with members of the Commission on Disability and came up with, with one member in particular, and we walked the site and we talked about concepts. And so I developed a series of possible elements that we could use. And then I went back to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee, the Commission on Disability, and with, I met with the Concord Public Works staff, and, and last week, just met with the, or two weeks ago, met. just met with the, or two weeks ago, met with the West Concord Green Thumbs. And so through that, those conversations and discussions sort of winnowed down the elements, and that's what we have before you, is the short-term possibilities. So, short-term, we would add two signs that would welcome people to Junction Park and ask them to use caution and to be cognizant and aware of other people. Those signs could be different types of signs. That is about three or four pages into the, the entire document. One would be, one sign would be located in the park at Club Car Cafe. The other would be at the Main Street entrance. And those could be installed now. We could even use our temporary sandwich board signs, the upright signs, and try a series of different signs to see how that would work. The next piece would be to install planters with a vertical element such as a trellis. Then, and, and using a planter that's rounded, not sharp edged, not sharp edges, similar to what is already existing in the park. There are two planters already existing in the park. And then adding one to two planters that would better define the seating area just outside of the Club Car Cafe. Install some metal planters with decorative screens to have a blocked, visual blockage of the commuter rail and the, and the parking lot beyond. Having four planters within the park, as well as one at the intersection, so five planters in the park that would narrow the pathway. One of the observations made by the Commission on Disability is that, you know, we have a 13-foot wide pathway and it's straight. People want to just go right through there. So let's think about how we can reduce that visual impact. And so people would have to slalom through with the design that I've put forward. Then to add a colorful border at the pavement, particularly at Main Street and Club Car Cafe. I don't yet have permission from the MBTA to do any painting of pavement next to the platform. I think I will have to meet with them and make sure that they're okay with that. And then finally, to remove the existing, the very small signs that are there. So we have, various pictures are in that proposal. I've with the, I've done an estimate of about $28,000 for this short-term plan. There isn't $28,000 currently available. $15,000 has been allocated for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail work adjacent to the Concord Prison Cemetery, but there's $15,000 which can be utilized this year. So we could begin to purchase the elements so that we'd be ready to be put in place in the spring and then follow up with final purchase in July, when, when if additional funds might come any, pardon?
When there's a new fiscal.
With new fiscal year. I did put in an application to the Community Preservation Commission Committee for $50,000 for both projects, the prison park project and the Junction Park. So I think that would cover the cost there. Let's see. So I've just, I've gone through very, very quickly, but you can see the different types of elements. The most expensive piece, if we decide to go with this particular sign that is being used as a wayfinding sign, is the most expensive piece. One sign is about $6,000.
Wow.
So there may be other, other types of signs that are less expensive, and I'll continue to explore that.
It's nine feet tall. It's a big
It's a huge sign, but it would be in, for the cyclists, it would be in their face, but it would definitely give people information. And there's another sign that is similar to this, that's about seven feet tall. Again, less cost, but would it be as impactful? So we're going to try different types of signs this year with, using just the existing signs that we have, the sandwich boards, and go forward from there. As, as I said, this has been an evolutionary process. And I need to go back to both the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee and the Commission on Disability to make sure that they're okay with all of this, as I, I did share it with everyone, with those three groups. I'm also presenting tomorrow night to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee, this plan. And I think I've done a preliminary with the West Concord Advisory Committee. So we're, I'm trying to get all of, anyone that I know who has an interest in West Concord to be aware of this. And a lot of this information is also what Concord Public Works would be willing to support. The planters would not remain in place in the wintertime because they do plow and snowblow and shovel Junction Park. I did, I did reach out and ask the Greenman Peterson, who designed most of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, about what the long-term solution might be. And their estimate is anywhere from 50,000 to 60,000 for design and maybe 150,000 to 200,000, depending on which plan we go with, for the long-term solution construction. So that, I did seek capital improvement plan request of $75,000 that had, that's in the hopper with all the other projects that are being considered by town departments as a funding source for a study or an evaluation of the success or, or need for that long-term solution. But I think there's a small portion of that could be used for the analysis and then the remainder could be used for, toward design. So that's, that's what I have for the, for the overall. So there's your implementation plan.
All right. Thanks, by the way. It's great to see implementation moving forward. And, I mean, even recognizing that there's some economic constraints. But Marcia, if you could just kind of summarize, this, which of these elements are kind of from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail proposal? And then which are those that you've kind of deviated or refined or, or changed since then? I guess it's the, it, it seems to me that like the things that are retained, if I think about them, are that kind of entryway as you come into the park, that notion of a gateway, if you will, on either end. The kind of tone of the signage and all of that. And then, I can't recall, but I do believe that there was this idea of creating more of a, not a barrier, outright barrier, but sort of a definition of the separation between the park and the commuter rail zone. So those are kind of all fundamental elements. And it just seems to me that the, the main departure is these, the planters
That is correct.
That are in the middle.
That is correct.
And, and so it, I guess I think of it as sort of a traffic calming type of objective. It's just that, I don't know, technically, you know, it, my, my concern is, does it create a new kind of safety hazard, something to run into?
The, the benefit of what they call the urban, the tactical urbanism is traffic calming. And by using materials or elements that can be moved, you can test it, you can try it out. You can say, let's try this pattern this week, let's try that pattern that week. We get some feedback, we find out what the problems are. The reason that the planters are initially designed to be on the pavement is that Public Works feel that that's where they need to be to start with. If they, if, they should be on pavement, they should be level, they should be easy to access.
I see.
And if they're on the grass, they will, they will kill the grass.
Kill the grass, for sure, yeah.
So, so we start with them on the pavement. And then we, we make the decision from there. And we might add small paving areas, you might add a paving stone underneath to, if you want them out of that straightaway, out of the pathway. The, the West Concord Green Thumbs were adamant that you needed something in the middle of that large open area where the, there's the intersection of the east-west route with the north-south route. So that is in, included in this plan.
Oh, right there.
That little circle right in the middle of that large area. So this plan, as I said, is an evolution of all the different comments that I've received from the three groups that I've reached out and met with.
Okay. Comments? I see Linda.
I think you did a terrific job trying to meld all the various comments that you received. I was at that Commission on Disability meeting where you presented this. And I have to say, the response was overwhelmingly positive in terms of the safety issues that they had identified, as well as sort of the aesthetics in terms of how you were suggesting to deal with the movable measures to calm the traffic. So it's terrific that you're reaching out to all these groups because there'll be additional feedback to validate this and maybe refine it further.
I think, if I may, once the planters are, have been purchased and we have them in hand, I would invite representatives from all of the groups to meet out in the park and to test it, you know, to be, while the, while the planters are empty before they get really heavy. See what it looks like and see how it might, might function.
It's a great idea, yeah.
Mary?
I have some questions. First of all, I think this is great. I really do. I think you've done a great job. I have a few questions. The pavement painting, I love that idea, but how would that be maintained?
If, Public Works had that same concern. And it would be, we would use a non-skid paint, paint for, specifically for asphalt and concrete, because we have two different materials that we're dealing with. There are materials that you can use to, in case there is vandalism to that, and, and we would just come, Public Works would just come in and paint over it if there were vandalism or anything like that. This is probably something that would need to be done annually because the winter salt and, and paving. So it engages artists in the community in doing this kind of, kind of work. But I, I've seen it very successfully used in other communities, but it would probably have to be done annually.
Okay. My other question is, is I know when we were talking about this earlier, we were also concerned with people coming from the north. So if we're talking about safety, so this doesn't address that at all?
You're absolutely correct, because there wasn't money to do that. And so I think we would, we would test these elements here in this location and then use them in the same, same kind of setting at the other end.
Up, up, up. Okay, great.
Right. Pavement markings and the screens with the planters.
So that would be part of the long-term solution?
That, I think that's down the road, not
So to speak, down the trail.
Down the trail. 2024.
It's short-term B.
Right. It's, it's short-term, but it's not Junction Park related, it's BFRT.
Yeah. But I mean, it is related because it kind of, you try to get people into the orientation where they're not going to be speeding across the rails and
It wasn't part of the study that, or it wasn't part of the work that the Advisory Committee did. So I thought if we could, if we could get some consensus on the elements for Junction Park, we would use those same elements to address the issues that you raised at the northern end.
Great. Because if we're talking about safety and that, it, it depends upon the people coming out of the right way.
Right.
And then my final question, I just want to confirm, so the way we're going to test whether this is working or not would be, how, so part of that you said would be money possibly down the road from a design firm to see if this is working in the, in the shorter term. How would we decide whether this is working? Would we rearrange some of the planters or?
I think it's observation. And I know that the Advisory Committee has, has, people are, are out there and using the park regularly. Maybe we could come up with a plan for how we could do that in-house. I don't have a longer-term solution. The funding was requested for FY '25, which means it would be available in the summer of '24.
Do you have any comments, Henry? Okay. I had one more, which is just given that funding is constrained, I assume this is going to be kind of a stepwise process, even the short-term plan. What elements do you expect you'll start with and then which will you proceed with after that?
I think that will be answered through my additional conversations with, with the MBTA and others. I think the planters and the signs are probably the most, and the trellises are the most important pieces. And then making sure that we have the funds for the paint to do the, you know, engaging artists to, to come up with the pattern for at least where the trail meets the park near Club Car Cafe and where the sidewalk meets the, the park at Main Street.
Okay. Because I, I would think like the most vital safety opportunity is the area that's between the commuter rail area and the, and the park. That, to me, for the very first thing
Until I have confirmation, when, when Nat Welch and I met with the representatives from the MBTA this past spring to talk about Junction Park, they said they would be open to see what we came up with. So I need to submit this to them.
So we still have to talk with them.
Right.
All right. Again, considering that there are a lot of parties involved here, a lot of public interest, I'm going to open to public comments. So if you're in the room and you have a comment, and of course, if you're, especially if you're one of the committees that helped create or comment on this, then please come and introduce yourself and
I'm the Chair. Thank you, Nat Welch, Co-Chair of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee, 141 Stokes Street. And thank you for the time and for your consideration of, of the work. One of our members is here also. So I first want to recognize the work that Marcia's done with her, with her team to put this together. It's a, it's a great plan, almost completely in line with the recommendations of the, of the, of the committee. And you, Mr. Chair, figured out that the one deviation are the planters in the middle and that's kind of the, if there's a fly in the ointment, that would be the one that we'd think about it. Tactical urbanism was intended for, for streets, for automobiles, for calming traffic. Bicycles aren't automobiles. And at the same time, one of the charges that you gave us and as, as a committee was to, was to improve the safety at Junction Park. So we did a lot of work, starting, we actually heard about tactical urbanism very early on. And much of what we, what we've put into the report is based on that. And Marcia's picked that up in, in the plans. We did have discussions about putting things in the walkway. And our, our next committee meeting isn't until October 24th, but I individually polled each member of the committee. And six of the nine have some level of objections to putting the planters in the walkway. Three of them, it's not a hill worth dying for in some sense, right? It's like, they, they see that as being okay. I think the, the common theme is that the, the planters in the walkway may actually create more congestion and may make things slightly less safe. We do have, as you, as you know, we have a full-time member from the Commission of Disabilities on our, on our committee. So we listen carefully to Mary Beth when she, you know, when she, she raises points. And she was one of the ones who talked about potential of, of creating more congestion on the walkway. So this is not a, a voted item, but kind of the polling right now is we prefer to keep the planters out initially and see how things work. That's kind of the approach we'd like to take. Save a little bit of money and see how things work. And, and, you know, we're hoping that the, the entry signs, the trellises, et cetera, will achieve much of what's needed. I recognize the, and, and understand the feelings of some people who work in the park, who feel that the bicycles aren't, you know, cyclists aren't safe. And as you may recall, we, we worked for six months, we talked with many members of the public, did a poll, had 560 responses. Over 34, 35% of the comments were, there's not a safety issue. But I also understand you can't just tell someone it's not a safety issue. So we need to be cognizant of that. We need to represent all of the public. So I think our initial feeling is that we could do some other things around the outside first that we recommended, the signs coming in, the trellises, and then see how, how things are affected by that. That's an approach. So the suggestion is that the committee's meeting on October 24th, and we could include that as one of the items and then come back to you with what we hear from the public on it. I do want to point out one other thing, I think, Ms. Hartman, you mentioned the safety issue coming from the north. That's been on the top of our mind also. And I actually rewrote that section late last week and just with a whole eye around, well, how does it feel as you go through? And I think we can do some things pretty quickly that will, will direct people the right way, coming from the north. That was outside of the, the remit that we had from you, but all of the members in the committee felt that from the north to the, to the crossing, even though it was outside of our jurisdiction, that is a key safety thing.
It's got to keep people headed in the right direction.
Right. Got to get people headed in the right direction and, and you have to make it, I think the poll showed that roughly 20% of the people didn't know that you took a left when you're going north.
That even was there.
Yeah. You, you go around the club car, they didn't know that. You said, oh, I just go straight across. So we know that's an So we know that's an issue, we have data on it, and that's why this is an important part of the plan. So that's our suggestion, is hold off initially on buying the four planters in the middle and, you know, the committee's ready to do some more work on this topic. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the audience want to make a comment? I think I saw back here first.
Thank you. Cynthia Katz, 20 Conan Street, Hyman. So I think that, I appreciate a lot of, a lot of the plan that Marcia has presented. I think that a lot of good can come from it. I spent a lot of time last spring on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee Zoom meetings and learned a lot about, about how that committee was approaching things and how it thought. And I think one thing that I came to was, well, one thing I know is that Junction Park's a park. It's a park that has historical and cultural significance and it's been in existence a while. It's also only 63 steps long, and they're my steps, which are not very long. It's also a place that's a hangout, and I think that that wasn't something that the Bruce Freeman Advisory Committee really understood. But I live in West Concord, I walk by that park every day, and I spend a lot of time watching it, hanging out in it, looking at it. And as Chris Whalen, the former town manager, said, it's a park that really attracts an unbelievable range of population. It's a park where I'm encouraged and surprised by how many teenage boys hang out in that park. They come, they hang out, groups of five, six, seven, eight of them, and they sit and they hang out. There are people who sit with their family members from the assisted living home, people take time to have lunch, they visit, they chat, people in wheelchairs. And the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee's own data showed that more than 50% of the people who use that park are pedestrians. And yet, a big concern is bikers. So I've spent a lot of time asking people who bike through whether they saw the signs. So I hope that those big signs, which are expensive, those wayfaring signs, can be a part of the, a part of the solution because the current signage, every biker I asked said, oh no, I didn't see any signs, I don't know any signs. I mean, they're not in the right place and they're too small and bikers, they're just going through. And one person in particular just summed it up. He said bikers don't want to dismount. Agreed. And, and I think that one of the other things that I really came to understand is that everyone on the Bruce Freeman Bike, Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee was a biker. And so that lens of who you are and how you come to it is also something that's really important, especially given that more than 50% of the people that use that park are pedestrians. So it seems to me that if bikers don't want to dismount, period, it has, we have to remove the want and we have to, if what we want is a park that can continue to be used by the incredible range of people who currently come and both walk through the park in multiple ways, right? They go through it, they go across it, they hang out in it. How we can make it a place where everybody can continue to enjoy the park and so I hope that the idea of big, not using sandwich boards. Sandwich boards are so ubiquitous these days as to become visual wallpaper and garbage. Sorry if people love sandwich boards, but, so I hope that we're willing to invest in that and I hope that we don't ever get to a place where we have to start implementing any structural changes to Junction Park, which the taxpayers of this town have already spent a lot of money to create the kind of infrastructure in drainage and in other things and plantings that make the park the really wonderful, small, little place that it is in a part of West Concord that is special. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, come on up.
Hi, Sabrina Haber from 308 Oak Hill Circle, and I'm speaking as Representative of the West Concord Green Thumbs. So thank you, Select Board, thank you Marcia for your plans. We really appreciate the incredible amount of work and effort that's gone into the short-term plans for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. As we highlighted during the July 11th Select Board meeting, our highest priority remains the safety in Junction Park. But as the speaker just before me pointed out, JP is foremost a park that is enjoyed and used by a large variety of people in Concord, pedestrians of all ages and mobilities, from toddlers right up to those people who are there using walkers, people on wheels of all kinds, right up, and the gardeners of the Green Thumbs who are there standing and kneeling for eight months of the year maintaining the gardens. We have emphasized that our belief that asking and suggesting people to slow down in Junction Park is inadequate, especially when the new bridge opens over Route 2 and traffic on the rail trail increases, bringing far more e-bikes especially makes us extremely nervous. We urge that some sort of impediments be placed in the pathways through JP that would cause anyone moving quickly to slow down while they navigate through the park, tactical urbanism. You know, our feeling that, we understand that the advisory committee, the Bruce Freeman, does not like the planters being placed there. You know, they don't, the idea that it creates more congestion and might be a safety hazard, you know, that's fine if you don't slow down, that will in fact happen. But the whole idea is that if you approach the park and you see these large planters, you will slow down, and that's exactly what we want you to do. It's unlikely that most bikers will dismount. Some may, that would be lovely, but the main idea is that you slow down, you respond to the visual stimuli in front of you, slow down, you take in the surroundings that are in front of you. And, you know, perhaps you argue that if you're in a crowded park, you see it's crowded, you slow down on your own, but maybe they don't. Young children and the gardeners who are down low may not be highly visible, but planters are tall and large and very visible, and you have to slow down to avoid them. And they're an external control, they're not a rule. You want to slow down because you don't want to run into it. It's common sense and you don't get mad at the planter for being in your way, but you do get mad at the person who shakes their finger at you and says, hey, slow down. But you don't get mad at the planter, the planter's just there, you slow down, you go around it, you say, oh, well, there's a little toddler playing there, I'll stay going slow and I'll get my way through the park and out you go on your way. Everybody feels safer. Everybody gets to use the park, everybody enjoys their day. And for us, this idea of waiting to see if it all works out and not taking the safe route, I think we need to take the safe route. We don't want to, there haven't been any accidents, we don't want there to be any accidents. I think we cannot afford for there to be an accident. I would much prefer to be overly cautious, particularly, hopefully this is a short-term plan and there will be a long-term solution in our future, but I think we just can't afford to wait and see, wait and see until there's an accident and somebody's injured. I think that would be disastrous. We did meet with Marcia Rasmussen, we have reviewed the plan and we think it's a really good plan, it takes our concerns seriously. We entirely agree with her idea of meeting and looking at the exact placement and really thinking about what makes the most sense. We think it's a great idea to do that with bikers present and people present from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee if possible, and people present from the Disability Commission and really pick an afternoon and take some of the empty planters and move them around and really see what looks right before we put dirt in them and what makes sense for the best layout and give it a go. Because we haven't done this before and I think we can really think about what's going to work best to slow traffic down without being hazardous to anyone. And in this way, the short-term plan will have the best possible chance of success. And that's the heart of quality tactical urbanism. It's flexible, it's responsible urban planning at its best. And the final point I want to make is that the Green Thumbs believe this really should be a short-term plan and we hope that the town will continue planning toward a permanent solution to JP and its traffic issues through the park.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you very much.
Are there any other public comment? Yes, forward, state your name and address and make your comment.
Can you guys hear me with mask or?
Yeah.
Take it off, okay. Yeah, I've been out in the safe zone out there. Yeah, Dan Stapleton, 20 Conan Street, and I try not to repeat what's come before me, but I just want to introduce a few comments. You know, the current discussion really here is about safety, and to the extent that there is a safety issue, it's due solely because people are not dismounting their bikes. Safety issue is not a function of the young woman who rides her wheelchair, automatic electric wheelchair down that park on almost a regular basis. Safety issue doesn't come by the older vets that I see sitting there on a regular basis. They are using that space as a park, which what it was intended to do. But aside from the safety issue, I think there's a little bit, there is another issue here and it's really why I hope we're pretty proactive on this current plan here because the real issue is the future of that space as a park, in particular with the amount of anticipated bicycle traffic. I did attend a lot of the Rail Trail Committee Board, Committee Meetings and overall, I'm a, you know, user and supporter of the rail trail. But the concept of a shared space is that the relative use of that shared space changes where you are. So when I'm in the main throughway of the rail trail, I have a complete expectation that bikes are going to go flying by me. Along the main throughway of the rail trail, you see a couple of set-asides where you have insets where you can go seat, they're taken off the trail. You know, the expectation is those are spaces where you can sit. Well, this space is fundamentally a park and my problem with the planning process that's gone forward so far is this presumption that it's really focused on biking and not on its use as a park. So I really question whether that park can survive as a park unless we're proactive now in mitigating the traffic. And a question that I had, because I did look at your study and your plan, is have we abandoned the idea that bikers are intended to dismount? That is the current requirement now. Whether people obey it or not, that's what the signage says. I hope we don't abandon that. Cynthia said it's only 60 paces, it's a very short area, so I hope we do encourage to have bikers dismount and, you know, that's the fundamental purpose of the traffic control, traffic slowing, the planters, isn't just to get people to slow down, it's to encourage them to get off their bikes. I hope, I hope this does work because, you know, I want to get a sense of, you know, how to oppose the long-term plan and sort of get ready for that. I will say, I pulled the plans for the construction plans for the park, I think, and I'm very familiar with the proposed long-term plans, and I think number 200,000 is probably not realistic given the amount of infrastructure you have underground there. You know, in addition to the aesthetic value, there's, you know, town made a big investment in putting a lot of drainage infrastructure, low retaining walls, a rain garden, and to just wipe all that out, I, you know, I don't think it's desirable, but you're not going to do it for 200,000 either. So one last comment. If you are talking to MBTA, if you go out there, look beyond the concrete columns, you'll see there's actually a greenway, a narrow green stretch right there to the, to the north. I think I would ask MBTA if they thought about extending that, it's another 20 feet, 30 feet, they could put a bench there, green space, and leave enough for pedestrian access right there, so that's a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. If there aren't any further public comments in the audience here present, I'll turn to the Zoom. I see two people with their virtual hands up. I'd like to call upon Lois Suarez next.
Hi. My, recently took a ride on the trolley, which I thought was really nice, very nice, but the stop in West Concord was a little terrifying because the trolley stopped in the middle of the road, Commonwealth Avenue, and I think the sign, it seemed like the sign was right at the edge of Junction Park and the trolley driver had no idea that you could like go around to the parking lot, had no idea. And I don't know, you know, who, what the governance is there, but I would strongly suggest that if you look at the trolley as being something to continue, that that be somehow or other looked at, you know, in an awareness way. And at this point, the trolley does not take bicycles nor does it have access for handicap, even though the back door looks like it does, but the driver said it never worked and whatever. So those are things, bike and mobility, like, you know, wheelchair or whatever lift to the back is something that's probably in the future and how that all coordinates with Junction Park, the MBT, and the MBTA getting on, off, and the signage for the trolley, which right now is a little bit scary. I just, I, it might be a little bit beyond what you're doing right now, but it seems like it's, if the trolley is to continue, that would be something to really take a, take a look at and be aware that that's on deck.
Okay.
I was supposed to say where I lived, 34 Everett Street apartment.
Right, thank you.
Sorry.
Now, Bill Slaughterthwaite. Bill, if you'd like to unmute and make your comment?
Yes, I'm Bill Satterthwaite and live at 297 Lawesbrook Road. And I'll just say that I did commute by bicycle year-round for about 15 years when I lived in Boston. I have two suggestions. Three of the planters are, as we've told you, have been mentioned, screen trellis planters. I like the picture and these planters clearly are more of a visual impediment to bicyclists than the regular planters. Therefore, they probably will slow down the bicycles more than the regular ones would. So I hope making more of the planters, screen trellis planters will be considered. I would also point out that if bicycles are going slower because of the visual planters or because of congestion, any accident that happens is far less dangerous, or at least is less dangerous. Then the other point I'd like to make is that I assume the green rectangle at the north end of the walkway is a planter. I suggest putting another of these planters in a location that will encourage the bikers going north on the rail trail to turn left, to follow the trail to the bicycle railroad crossing gate rather than going straight ahead to the parking lot. I think that could really be helpful, although those may be expensive planters. And I'll just comment that when I've been in the park and the middle school or teenage boys are there talking and sitting, they've been great, they even clean up all their trash. I guess once I had to pick up one piece of paper. But, and also that, well, as I said, congestion, to the extent it slows people down and doesn't add to the danger much, it'll mean that any given accidents are so. Finally, I did want to say that accomplished, really skilled bicyclist, and I'm not one of them, can actually stand still without dismounting and go very slowly and so on. And, and so I don't think we should focus too much on dismounting. We should focus on people being safe. And so anyway, so thank you very much. And it's true, lots of people have worked very hard for several years. I first got involved in this and then dropped out, I don't know, five years ago or more. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thanks for your comment. Do I see, I do see one more, Pamela Drit.
Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green, Unit 4. Please do not anticipate danger that doesn't exist. There's a lot of security theater that disrespects people's individuality by expecting them to be mean or inconsiderate. And I think most Concord bicyclists are already considerate. And to make them walk, which is very uncomfortable, especially if you're using like foot clips, toe clips, is a large ask to not actually be safer. When going very slowly, we'll do the same thing. Please don't force a rigid restriction on people that could be easily covered on be considerate, go very slowly, look for pedestrians.
Okay, thanks for your comment. And I believe that's all the comments that I see on the screen. So thanks very much. It does seem like the planters are the big question mark and the beauty of this is that they are movable. So I think I used the analogy of rapid prototyping last time. So we will see, will they cause bikers to veer into people? Or, you know, will they slow down? Will they, you know, we'll see what happens. And depending upon what happens, we can make adjustments. Okay, so on we go. So that brings us to our next agenda topic, which is White Pond. We are making a tour of the town today.
Really are.
So the White Pond Preservation Task Force Charge.
So I think you all read the material in your packet. I'll just give a brief update. I think at the beginning of May, I asked the, or I asked the Select Board if they were open to rewriting the charge for the White Pond Advisory Committee, direction that, that we were. Since that time, I have sat down and spoken with over a dozen people. I've spoken with residents of White Pond. I've spoken with residents of other ponds. I've spoken with town staff. I've spoken with members of the White Pond Advisory Committee, past members of the White Pond Advisory Committee, past Select Board members who are liaisons to the White Pond Advisory Committee, attorneys, I've spoken to many people. And based on the input that I got from those people, I first of all, put together a revised White Pond Advisory Committee charge, went back and showed that to some of the people. And I realized that, or what I was directed to do would be to more likely make a task force. And the purpose of the task force would be a more short-term and focused attempt to address some of the issues that are facing the White Pond watershed. So briefly, I'll just say the three things that I was, hope that the task force would accomplish would be, first of all, to come out with a prioritized list. Right now, we've got a list of four, I'd say three or four things that the, the vision statement that was published last year mentions. And I would hope that we would be able to prioritize that list so that we can knock things off. The second thing I'd hope to do would be to determine the roles and responsibilities. Because it seems like whenever we talk about doing something, we get kind of on a detour as far as, well, who's responsible for that? So if it's stormwater management, is it, is it the neighbors? Is it the neighborhood? Is it the Department of Public Works? Who's responsible? So I think it'd be very good to get a clear understanding of who is responsible for what, so that if we want to move forward, we know where the clear responsibilities lie. And then finally, based on that work, to recommend what would be the future role of the White Pond Advisory Committee going forward. So again, I'm looking at a short-term focused task force. I've give, I've have a draft in front of you. I think that I've, I've started to try to recruit people and I'll have to say it's challenging. And I'm beginning to think that maybe some of my, the membership that I was hoping to seat, I might have been a little bit ambitious as far as the skills that I was hoping to put on the, on the committee. But I'll stop there and ask for any input from other Select Board members.
I can't imagine that there are a lot of limnologists.
But I like the word.
In town, but you know, Concord always surprises me. We have so much talent in this town.
Exactly.
There's a directory of limnologists.
Limnologists, okay.
I have three suggestions.
Good.
One is that, that, I, I, maybe I shouldn't make this because you're already having trouble finding people that fit categories.
Right.
But I think one of the people that, one of the categories should be somebody who's as experienced with like public drainage works, you know.
Yep.
And I don't know, know if it should be an engineer, but, and you have somebody you think, I think from biologist, health department, so on. But one of the problems there is going to be what, what you might want to build there as drainage and sewage facilities. The second is that you say that at least one person should not be a resident of the White Pond area. I think it should say not more than one person should be a resident of the White Pond area. Because I think that there's a lot of self-interest there. And I think you may want people who are a little bit more objective about what the solutions are.
Well, then I think, wouldn't you prefer the wording that is there now? At least one member.
No, I say not more than.
He's saying maybe one member should be from the White Pond.
Or maybe not more than.
From within, because I, I thought you meant, okay, I thought you meant only.
In other words, I don't, I, I, it may not be, you may not be the most productive thing to have it dominated by local residents.
Seeing.
The third one, my third comment, is something that's, I think, is somewhat unusual for town boards, but I, I think it's something we ought to think of more in the future. And that is, rather than saying that they will elect their own chair, is to say that the Select Board, the appointing authority, will designate the chair. So that would give us a little bit more control over the direction that this takes. And I, and I'm, and I think that maybe that's something we ought to think about for other boards and committees as well.
All right, well, my comments then would be response to that, which is to recognize that these are volunteer efforts. And so we can't necessarily dictate all of these things and expect to be able to staff a task force. That self-interest in part does motivate volunteers to participate in, in town boards and committees and motivates them to pursue deliverables. So I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing. You know, certainly the task force produces a report that we, you know, need to then review and implement. So we ultimately have the authority of implementation, or the town does. But really, we should be seeking a task force that essentially can get started and get the work done.
Just a few thoughts on my part. However, the tendency, especially around here, it's like true of the legislature, is that the committee is the chair. And whoever the chair is has a significant influence on the direction that the committee takes. And it also probably takes, can play an important role in recruiting people to serve on the committee. So it's worth, it may be worth saying that when you make the initial appointment, that that is the person that you are designating as the chair of that committee. I see, I don't think there's any more difficult, difficulty that's stemmed from that. In fact, it may, may make it easier to recruit some people that say them, we would like you to be the chair of this committee, help us form it.
If only as chair I had that much authority in this board, but no.
We have, we have, we have a rotating chairs, which is the weakest kind of influence possible.
Well, I think that's true generally of our town boards and committees.
Well, it has its pluses and its minuses. Of course, with our current chair, it's a great plus.
Oh, gosh.
Remember, Henry.
Flyer will get you everywhere.
This is a task force, so it's not a standing committee.
Yeah.
Does it matter?
No.
Maybe there's even more flexibility. I, I don't know.
It's an interesting idea.
Maybe I just spend too much time thinking, you know.
That's an interesting idea, that we would appoint the chair that might make it easier to recruit people to the task force. That's.
Well, it might be worth a try. It's like moving a planter around.
It's an idea.
What, do you have a comment?
Well, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And I do, in fact, think this could, let me say it this way. The White Pond, White Pond and the area that the town now manages, beyond the beach, actually, is an asset for the entire town. And to the, yes, I think it's important to have people from the immediate area, but I would like to see more diverse membership on the committee in terms of geographically representing the town, the town as a whole. I thought the information that you provided in the, particularly in paragraphs one and two in your letter to the Select Board should somehow be picked up and included as part of the charge itself, as an introduction to the charge itself. Because I think that's valuable context for people. And I would, your first bullet under the current situation, you talk about the town's acquisition of the town beach. I would say and surrounding area. Or somehow capture that. And one, another way to capture it is to, another bullet point might say, one of the changes has been significant changes to the upland area from the beach to provide ADA access and other amenities.
I don't know if it is ADA compliant. Can somebody help me here?
That was one of the.
That path, I, I sure hope it is.
Okay.
Considering the number of back and forths that it makes.
Oh, you mean at the beach or the other land?
Above the beach. Basically, I think what she's identifying is, you know, some people might interpret the beach as literally the patch of sand.
Yeah, and the water.
You know, there is a whole site there, I guess.
That the town now manages.
That it's, you know, and it has been.
Expand that to be more than just the sand.
Yeah, and that it has been updated and, you know, has different uses now than it used to.
Okay, got it.
And then this may be too early in our discussion as this question, but is, I think your recommendation was to perhaps disband the current advisory committee. Have they been included in that conversation at this point or?
We talked about that last, at their last meeting. And it, and I explained that it was a temporary thing because what I'm hoping is that the task force, based on the work that the task force does, will have a better idea of what the role of the White Pond Advisory Committee is going forward. Again, which is to prioritize, get broader input, find out who's responsible for what. So it was really kind of like a reset and that the White Pond Advisory Committee may continue or may not. It would be up to the task force. I did bring that up to them. The chair of the White Pond Advisory Committee resigned because he felt that this was no different than the White Pond, what the vision that they had written in November, last November, and that it wasn't moving in the right direction.
And some of that is defining the membership as a town-wide interest, I think.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. I, I put here at least one member of the task force, but I would hope that it would be two, at least two. But again, you know, we're all, we're all hoping to get people on a lot of different committees, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I, I think at least one is not enough if we're trying to take a different direction.
How about at least two?
Albeit, I, I value the immediate neighborhoods input as well, but I think you need more than one.
Okay.
That's just my own.
Two? Because you were, you have a same concern.
How big is the group?
Five.
I'd say at least two.
Okay, at least two.
At least two.
Good. So, Matt, do you want to?
I'm fine with that. I mean, I think that this is a major resource for the town, that the town itself has, you know, increasing level of involvement and interest in the pond and that this moves us from kind of advocacy to action. And that that's, I think that time is not on our side. So having a task force with a defined term and with a set of goals, I think is the right approach.
I just want to add one thing. I have been talking to people about joining this task force. And it's challenging, as we know, it's challenging to get people. What I am hearing from people is interest in a broader ponds committee. And I know, Carrie, we talked about that a while ago. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And I will try to recruit members for this committee to the best of my ability. I've got, you know, word will go through the Trails Committee and the Rec Commission and, and word of mouth. I'm not sure I'm going to be successful.
That's an interesting idea.
What?
Ponds Committee.
Yeah.
Of course, it may mean that they get interested in some other totally different pond and pay no attention to.
White Pond.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
So that isn't it. And that would perhaps attract more people because each one has their own pond that they are interested in.
Or they're interested in waterways in general.
Right.
That's what I'm hearing. So when I approach people and I ask if they're interested in this, that has been the reaction I've gotten so far.
And I'd make another comment about the effectiveness of task forces. The Personnel Study Task Force did their job. They gave us a report and they were done. The Civil War Task Force has done their job and they have accomplished it within, more or less within the time and within the parameters we set. And it seems to be a model that works quite well.
So that might be something that the task force recommends, that going forward, we have a pond committee as opposed to a white pond committee. But again, that would be their, their job. So what I guess.
Yeah, I mean, my concern about having a ponds committee or task force is just the diversity of issues, pond by pond. You know, you look at Warner Pond and it's an entirely different set of questions. You know, do we proceed with dredging, even though the budget for dredging seems to be much, much higher? Or do we take down the dam? Because lots of people are taking down dams and creating, you know, restoring the original topography. You know, there's, there's a lot of very diverse issues relative to White Pond issues, which I think have been clarified, you know, with vision document and other things. I, I think a task force, you got to keep it tight, got to keep it focused. So I, I'd like to start there personally.
Okay.
Right. Have we beaten that one to death?
I think, well, so the question is, can we go ahead and approve the charge? I think there was one, well, there were two edits that were proposed, right? So maybe we could do that. We could say to move to approve the charge with the.
Maybe three, three edits maybe?
Okay, well, how about a motion? Does someone want to propose a motion? Or do we just bring it back next time with the, no.
No.
So, so Lynda, do you have a motion that you could make on this one? Or our clerk pro temp?
Sure.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. I move that we approve the draft for a White Pond Study Task Force, I guess. Is that what we're calling it?
No, the White Pond Task Force Charge as written.
Yeah, oh, sorry. White Pond Task Force Charge as written with suggested revisions to include the background and current situation paragraphs from the letter to the board in the charge itself, to perhaps expand definition of one, at least one of the bullet points under the current situation paragraph. And then to amend the membership suggestion to at least two members from other parts of the town. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you, Mary.
Off we go with the task force. All right, now.
Thank you.
We have one more.
One more thing.
Piece of business. And that is, I think, what we've been calling informally the correspondence policy, but actually is called the Concord Select Board Citizen Correspondence Publication Policy. I collected comments from people over the past two weeks and sent out the revised draft this weekend. There was one late-breaking comment about including Concord business owners among those that we would publish in addition to residents. And I also should mention, there was one comment that I couldn't incorporate directly in the draft, and that came from Mr. Dane, who I think could represent his view, but that was that he feels that it was really at the discretion of the chair, the publication of correspondence, and that really leave it at that rather than having a formal policy. So with that aside, the edits are really to clarify that, you know, authors should provide name and address. They should be a resident or business owner. That the messages will be printed in their entirety, but they should be a maximum of two pages or 1,000 words. And that if we get a lot of comments, then we can publish a representative sample. And if we get a lot of comments from one person over time, we can reduce, you know, we can limit the total number from one individual to prevent domination of the airwaves, if you will. And then a couple of more exceptions, threats, or.
You're just asking for trouble when you have all those rules. You know, how, the size, the length, who, and what they can do. Why, I don't see any reason not to have it purely discretionary.
Well, I think that we have run into trouble with correspondence, or certainly had comments from people about excerpting or about, you know, whether we should have published their letter or not. I think that this give, and it's a policy. So it's a set of guidelines. It certainly still gives the chair and the town manager discretion as they see fit to not. But it gives us a set of principles, I guess, if you will, for what we publish and how.
That we can point to if we need to.
Yeah. It just gives people, I think, more things to quibble about.
Okay, well, I mean, I differ, I guess, in my view.
I know the kind of people you're talking about who are, may object to their correspondence not being included in the package. But I think, I think if the policy is that the, whether or not, the purpose of the inclusion in the board package is to include things that might be of, might be relevant to the agenda or might be of general interest in the judgment of the, of the chair of the board. And I would just say that there's no inherent right under any circumstances for anybody's correspondence, no matter from who or on what subject, to be included. So that if you start from that principle, that it is, you know, if we think it's relevant or important or not repetitive of 100 similar pieces of correspondence, we'll consider putting it in the package. But I would think the default position should be, nothing goes in the package.
And I guess my difference of opinion there is I think we have this tradition of transparent government in Concord and really trying to be as open as possible. And so I'm really seeking a way to define ground rules that would allow us to get citizen participation to the greatest degree possible. So that's my motive here.
I'm glad we agree on everything.
Matt, the version I have doesn't have, it just says correspondence is supposed to be from a Concord resident, and I think we still need to.
Yeah, I sent the revised version to Chris, who said he would distribute. I don't know if, maybe there is maybe an email in our inbox that has the latest and greatest, but.
Just so long as that's added.
That is, has been added, so.
Okay, so it's Concord resident or business owner.
Yeah, it says correspondence must be from a Concord resident or business owner.
Good, till we add a business owner. Great, thank you.
And include the author's name and address.
Perfect, thank you.
So I was fine with the changes that had been made. I just, I have two questions, really. One is on where we talk about letters and emails should be addressed to, select board by name, quorum, select board members, or town staff person. What is the process right now for determining that? So, for example, when I get email and.
It's basically what's on the two or CC list.
Yeah. Are each one of us supposed to send them into the, to, now, Shannon?
Shannon?
Yeah.
I guess that would be the best thing. Yeah, from a, from a, you know, mechanics point of view.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would suggest we forward those to Shannon if she is not on the list.
So I, so I.
But I also would assume that if, for example, Carrie is on the distributional list, that Carrie will forward. Is that okay?
Yes.
But a letter sent. Okay, so we all are probably getting emails that only have our individual name in it, so by.
In that case, Shannon's just going to have to put up with repeated emails from us.
Or, or by this definition.
Oh, no, by this definition, we are not obliged to send them. If they're sending, if they're doing that divide and conquer approach, then no, we don't have.
Okay, I just want, I just want.
In fact, we probably shouldn't, because that wouldn't be consistent.
It's not consistent. I just want to clarify that so that I'm both meeting the responsibility, but also not. And then the second comment I wanted to make about this is, is this something that we should be sharing with all of our chairs once this is, assuming we approve this?
Well, I do think that there are a few committees, I mean, there are not all that many that get a lot of correspondence, but there are a few that do. And for them, I'm not sure if it's the same principles that would hold. I mean, maybe, I'll bring it up at the chair's breakfast.
Yeah.
So that's what I'll do.
Because in some cases, we've had some end runs, so to speak.
Yeah.
It may be different with different committees.
That's what I'm a little, I think we would just share this as, here's what we're doing. Just if you need a policy, then decide what you'd like to do.
I mean, for instance, with the Board of Appeals, where people send in correspondence relating to.
Oh, yeah, that's a totally different matter.
That becomes part of the record.
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, that's a, that's a whole different thing. And in fact, it's usually the case, too, with the planning board, you know, they're the other body, I think, of that gets tons of correspondence and.
And FinCom.
FinCom, and then the building committee. So, you know, each of them has, and the school committee. Each of them has a way that they acknowledge their correspondence today. I think they typically have their own model and ground rules. But I'll just share this as, here's what we've adopted, you know, and if you, if it's useful to you, go with it, you know, or with whatever you like.
Not to impose, but they should at least be aware, I think, yeah.
Right.
Good.
All right, then. So do we want to adopt this policy?
Yeah, move. We have a motion, right?
Okay.
Move to adopt the Concord Select Board Citizen Correspondence Publication Policy as written.
And distributed today with this, the amendments from.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, everyone.
You may have an opposition?
No, I think we had an aye.
An aye.
I think I heard it was unanimous.
What? I believe in an eye for an eye.
Okay. All right.
But not a tooth for a tooth.
So, committee nominations, there are none. So, committee appointments.
It did have some committee nominations. No, no, we don't, sorry. We have an appointment.
To our clerk. Mr. Dane, are you going to read the nominations or the appointments?
He's got my copy, so.
Oh, I pass it. Oh.
Here, it's right there.
And am I the maker of the motion?
Yeah, they are.
And I will move to approve the following committee appointments. To the Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee, Richard Higgins of 15 Grove Street, reappointed for a term to expire April 30, 2025. A corrective reappointment of Mary Ann Libbert of 19 Cranberry Lane for a term of May, term of May 1, 2020, to April 30, 2023. A corrective reappointment of Arthur Schwope of 281 Holden Wood Road for a term of May 1, 2021, to April 30, 2024. To the Hugh Cargill Trust Committee, a corrective appointment of Deana Whitfield of 67 Wits End Road for a term of May 1, 2020, to May 31, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Now, to the liaison reports. Anybody want to?
Sure, I can go first. Since our last regular select board meeting.
Two weeks, yeah.
Two weeks ago. The Concord Municipal Federal Housing Trust has met several times, as and the Concord Housing Development Corporation has also met. The main topic at this meeting was our select board meeting discussion of September 27th, I guess that meeting was, when we last met.
Twenty, yeah, okay.
Yeah, maybe not the 27th.
19th.
That was our last, okay, the 19th, thank you. I would have to say that there was great, people were stunned, I think, at the select board discussion that night on the topic of Christopher Heights. I think a further description would be that they were extremely disappointed for the amount of townwide work that has gone into this. There were comments that they had never seen. There, there was, since that time also, as we were notified, the developer has indicated he does not want to go forward if the town does not want to go forward. However, both the trust and the CHCD feel it is important to come back to the select board when they revisit this discussion with their reasons why they think this project is so important to the town.
And I think tentatively, we have scheduled that discussion to occur on the meeting of October 17.
Okay. And then subsequent to several of those meetings, the planning board met, as we heard earlier, and Lee Smith from the Concord Housing Development Corporation did meet with them, explain where the project was at this point. And the planning board, in fact, voted unanimously to support this project going forward and intend to write a letter to the select board to indicate their position. So I think I've, that would be the best way to summarize where we are on all of that. I've also attended the CPC, had their successful meeting, as was written up in the town manager's report. And what I will add is that there was several comments about the quality of the presentations and applications that have come in. So people are really doing a good job of trying to present their projects. I attended the DEI Community Four-Part Program that's being offered by the, through the Concord Carlisle Adult Education Program in cooperation with the League of Women Voters. I would say that both in person and on Zoom, there were more than 200. I don't know what the actual count was, but it was extremely well-attended. And the first session was, had three different panelists who addressed some early history of the town in terms of indigenous population, African Americans, and just some of the early settlers and what their priorities were. So, and there were some really good questions from the audience. So I think the next session is coming up soon and will be on, this is free of charge to the community. And if you were unable to attend the first one, not to worry. These sessions are being recorded, and you can enter the discussion at any point. And they will provide you with the recording so that you can see the sessions that you missed. And I would encourage people to do that. And I think that's enough summary for tonight.
Okay. Who else would like to go?
I'll go.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay, first thing, the Trails Committee, they continue to be excellent stewards of the extensive trail system. They also do a lot of work around planting pollinator gardens. So that's a fun group to wake, their meetings are early in the morning, so it's a fun group to go to. The Rec Commission, lots going on there. They're re-releasing the RFP for their strategic plan. And apparently, the reason they didn't get any responses last time wasn't because of the scope of the plan, but it was because of the turnaround time that they were requesting. So the feedback they got from the consultants who would bid on this was the turnaround time was too fast. So they're going out to bid again, and hopefully they'll get this back. It's going to be later than we originally thought. It'd probably be closer to the end of the fiscal year before we would have a draft of the, of the RFP. The Rec Department, their enrollments are up. They're, they are always coming up with new and creative programs. They hired, as you know, a new aquatic director and a new general manager for the BD Center. We talked a little bit about the fact that the BD Center expense for electricity next year is expected to go up by $55,000. So even though they're doing really a lot of work to increase the revenue sources, the expenses are just catching up with them. So they're really going to have to sit down and think about how to move forward, especially with a lot of the capital. As you might not know this, but two of the pools were down last week or last month because of pumps. They don't have any pumps in inventory, so when a pump goes down, they've got to actually wait to get a new one, so.
Yes.
So, yeah, so the lead times are long. So, you know, the BD Center is challenging. I mean, these people are doing the best they can. But with the new manager, I think we're going to have to look at it with fresh eyes. The last thing I'll talk about was the Economic Vitality Committee meeting. We had a good meeting. A lot of the discussion was around a little bit of confusion that the owner of Adelita and Woods Hill Table was running into as far as outdoor dining. Apparently during COVID, it was easy to have outdoor dining, and they were hoping to be able to do that again. And they, they are, when they went to the townhouse or when they went to the Department of Planning and Land and Management, they got confused and they didn't have a clear way to find out what were the requirements to continue with outdoor dining. So that's something that I think the new Economic Vitality Director would be the go-to person for.
Didn't we discuss this? Remember, I had a discussion with somebody about this particular issue. issue, especially with regard to the renewals of the liquor licenses for these restaurants. And what I had suggested was that with regard, at least to that issue, that we ask them, when they file their application for renewals, which are coming in now, because we vote in December on this, that they include in their description of the premises, the outdoor dining portion of their operation. So that, because one of the things that got waived if, for the COVID, was that they were not being required to change their license in order to serve outdoors. And so the simple solution, I thought, was to just ask them to amend their, their premises description in their renewal application.
Yeah. So I think the issue here, though, is with parking, parking requirements, and not, at least that's what I understood, that the issue is parking.
Effectively, they're expanding the capacity of the restaurant.
Right. Yeah.
But I thought, did we pass an article at town meeting, expanding the parking for those types of situations? We need to look into this.
Yeah. So, so as I understand it, we would need a creative solution for Adalita particularly.
Okay.
And we didn't get to that.
Okay.
Creative solution.
So another reason for an Economic Vitality Director.
Okay. Henry, do you want to make a liaison report?
I've had some correspondence with my friends at the library about their acquisition and retention policies.
By the way, I would say, even if that your message was coming after the policy had already been adopted, that even, just as a standalone email, it is like an all-star email. Just a beautiful piece of rhetoric. I just, masterfully written.
Thank you. And I am continuing that conversation.
Okay.
And the other thing is about the 2025 committee. We continue to grow, and we are having a, an event on Sunday, the 16th of October, at the, at the Concord Museum, for all of the members of our subcommittee and our, the executive committee, with a number of distinguished guests. And then we also have scheduled a public intake or hearing for November 3 to, to get, you know, find out what, what people would like to have included, or concerns or issues that they might have about the 2025 celebration.
Also, I should just also add that I don't know if your comments are fair relative to the library's policy, but just as a standalone message, it's a fabulous message. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I, not knowing, you know, the context. Just looking at this message in isolation.
This is a compliment with qualification.
I don't know. I, I read it out loud at a dinner party. Let's just put it that way.
Oh.
It was so well phrased.
Wow.
So if anyone, if others have not seen Henry's message without
No, we haven't.
The library retention.
Yeah, please send it to us.
Please forward it to the board.
How about if I?
It's at a public meeting. I'm making that request.
I'll send them to you, and you can include them.
In the packet. Okay, certainly. Because I, I think it will qualify. I think it will.
I'm a resident, so far.
No, but I'm thinking about the exceptions, the list of exceptions. But I think it's fine.
Henry, can I just ask about the October 16 event for the 225? So, I've asked, I got a notice about it, but I asked the question, are select board members invited?
Were what?
Are select board members invited?
Yes, they are. And they should have received invitations. The, the, were email invitations were sent out to all the members of the committee and the subcommittees and to the select board. If you didn't get one, you are invited, and I will, I will send an invitation to the whole.
Yeah.
I think I can get away with that, can't I? Send an invitation?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll send you an invitation.
Thank you.
All right.
What about Dean's letter? Why wasn't that included in the package? Didn't we get a letter?
Oh, his letter about the middle school?
It should be. It should be. Well, we'll put it in next time, I guess.
So that was sent to individual members again?
Was it sent just to individual members? But it was, it was addressed to the select board as a whole, though.
Could be.
I think he, in the, in the two line, he, he included finance committee, select board, building committee.
Yeah, okay. Just, just cross-checking here.
Yeah. Okay, so my liaison report is that, of course, like the rest of you, I went to the capital planning kickoff meeting with the schools. And just to highlight that, I think, as Henry alluded to a little bit earlier, Carrie made a great presentation, I thought, about the town's overall capital needs, and in particular, the, the public works and the public safety facilities, and, you know, certainly the potential gap we have now. And the schools did not have a new capital project, but I think the elephant in the room was that the, in budget, additional budget requirements of the middle school project, which could, in effect, amount to a, a large project. And I should also note that subsequent to the capital planning meeting, I made a request that our town manager is amenable to, and that Terry, who was on the capital, was sort of the guiding light for this capital planning process, have also agreed to, that we replace Tier Three, Tier Two, and Tier One with large, medium, and small.
Thank you. Good idea.
As project categories.
Good idea. But when you're talking about.
It's a shocking idea, but.
When you're talking about projects like the school, and the threshold for large is 5 million, it, it means it's.
I thought it was 10. It's five in one year or 10 over a period of years, right? Oh, it's five. Okay.
You'd think that that, that category over five is over-inclusive.
It probably is. I think it should be 10. Maybe 25. I don't know.
It is what it is right now. Don't confuse it.
That's all right. Well, inflation is happening. But, okay, so back to, I just wanted to share what happened at the, the capital kickoff. And then I stayed for the school committee meeting, and there was an inspiring presentation of something called the Calculus Project, which is a separate organization that had, that assigns outside teachers to students from disadvantaged or racially diverse backgrounds to provide sort of an extra boost in their math curriculum and, and training, effectively. And it has had tremendous results. And the participants in the program spoke here. It's not just in Concord. This is something that happens in other places around the country. And it's been going for some time. But now, you know, acting in Concord, both for the, the teachers as well as for the students, has been very enriching, and I think it's off to a great start. So I wanted to note that. And then Brian Folds.
Do the teachers do that on a volunteer basis?
I, I didn't capture that, but I did capture that it's like the middle school math teachers working with high school students. And so they're not sort of directly in the same class environment and curriculum. And so I think that that helps because it gives them a kind of a bridge from middle school forward. That, that was my understanding of how it working. I don't know how the compensation or any of that works. But the, the other thing is the, Brian Folds from the Light Board gave a presentation about electric buses and, you know, grant opportunities going forward, the, the potential, as well as the impact on greenhouse gases of deploying electric buses. It was very enlightening, I think, that it continued to show that it's probably the single biggest, you know, thing that we could do to make a change in the carbon footprint of our school system. So that, you know, there were other topics, of course, but those were highlights. And then the Climate Action Advisory Board spent most of their meeting either talking about refining their policies and procedures, or how they operate as a, as a board. And then, secondly, on the fossil-free infrastructure next steps. So they really want to understand the current, current situation, as well as what they could do to contribute. And of course, they're very highly anticipating a new sustainability director. Yes. And so that's, that's a critical hire for the town right now, especially given all of these initiatives that are taking place. And then I attended the Finance Committee, where the middle school came up, of course, but also those five-year budget projections that we did see in the capital planning meeting. And then the ARPA. And there was a lot of discussion about how ARPA funds are going to be spent. The Finance Committee, of course, wants to know. And then affordable housing, that really, basically, a discussion of the Finance Committee's perspective on the Christopher Heights project. So that's where we left.
Are they going to have another meeting before we talk with the people in?
You know.
October 27th or something?
October 17th. I don't know for a fact. They probably will.
I think October 17th is, I had it on my calendar as the, their guidelines meeting.
Finance Committee is, October 13th is, is their next meeting to talk guidelines.
Okay. But I don't know that they're going to come back. I mean, what it seemed to me, and again, noting that I'm recused from this, this whole deliberation, but just reporting out what they said, it, it appeared that there weren't any members that, at least at that moment, were prepared to make any additional investment in the project. At least, I, I didn't see any.
Makes sense.
I just heard one.
You, you heard one?
I just heard one who.
There was one reporting out on what was going on, but I didn't notice that they were.
Not that one. I, I heard one who said, you know, he basically agreed with some of the conversation that was going on. But in the end, we may need to evaluate the value of this project, essentially.
Okay. I was struck just by that. And I didn't, had the sense that they intended to take it up again as an issue.
They don't?
It didn't seem to me, at least based upon
I would like to know how they feel about it.
How Peggy Brakes concluded the, the topic. You know, and again, it wasn't a vote that they concluded. They just sort of, it was a sense of the, sense of the committee. I guess I, yeah, certainly could.
I would like to get their.
But you say that not only one of the committee expressed any interest in pursuing the project.
At that time, at least. Again, they may not, you know, have had the benefits of further appeals from other groups. So, so.
Be helpful to me to prep for the next discussion we have, to know how they, how they feel about it.
Okay.
More formally than, than a random decision.
Okay.
I know the planning board, in their letter, said that the Finance Committee has always supported it. And that is actually not true. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to not, to, for no action on the TIF. So.
What? Could you, Mary, could you say that again? I'm sorry.
The planning board, when they were talking, discussing it, they were putting together the letter. And one of the assertions they made was that the select board and the Finance Committee has always approved prior requests for money for the Grantham project. And when the CHDC came to town meeting to ask for the TIF, the Finance Committee recommended no action.
I mean, I don't know if that technically was funds. It's sort of in kind, but you're right. Okay, so. That's it, as far as I'm concerned. So correspondence, yes, we want to acknowledge Dean Banfield's letter to the board. And now that we've adopted a correspondence policy, we can include similar correspondence in future packets. And I believe that takes us to our adjournment. Oh, citizen comment. Excuse me.
Yep.
Oh, and I do see a couple.
Yep.
All right. We have no one here present in the audience. So Diane Proctor, you're first up.
Thank you very much, Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. I just wanted to remind people that the presence of correspondence is really very helpful for the CPC. We had an avalanche of correspondence last year. And for everybody, all citizens, to be able to read those letters, as well as obviously the committee, it made it a more open process, and it made people feel, in the neighborhood, I think, engaged and thoroughly involved, rather than feeling that there was a kind of heavy-handed administrative approach. I think Linda can, who was so much a part of those discussions, can, can, can remember how appropriate and important those were. So I, I think it has to do with not just transparency, it has to do with a sense of a responsible government. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Right. Thank you. And I see Pamela Dret.
Thank you. Pamela Dret, 13 Concord Green, Unit Four. I want to agree very strongly with Diane Proctor. I think that we should always err on the side of publishing the letters, even if it's repetitive. We don't have to read them all, but when we have the ability to read them, and, and we, I'm, I'm really looking forward to Henry's letter, email, getting to read that in your packet. Now, you've got me very curious. You see? This is important. Please, there were things that were very much missed with the lawsuit issues, with the, the route into the park. I'm trying to remember what the name of that was. That had all the letters been published, it would have been much easier for citizens like me to keep up on the matter and make a much better informed decision that might have saved the town a lot of money. Please don't restrict publications except in extreme instances in which it's like a slur of an individual attack, or something that really doesn't. Please err on the side of transparency, of publicity, of publishing everything, even if it's late. That's fine. As long as we can find it, please. And thank you so much.
All right. Thanks for your comment. And I believe that's all the public comments. So we're at the end of our agenda, and our meeting is adjourned at 9:38.
Do we have to leave now?
Yep, we do. We do.